Alrighty. It is eleven oh two on January twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five. We're here for a special meeting of Lake County Board of County Commissioners. If everyone in the room could silence your cell phones, please, as we stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we will start with the approval of the agenda. If there are any proposed changes to the agenda from the commissioners or staff, let us know now.
Nothing from staff.
Alright.
I move to approve the agenda.
Wonderful. So moved. So moved. Call for a vote. Yes?
Yes.
Aye.
Alright, that motion passes on a vote of unanimous, a unanimous vote, or three to zero. Alright, we will move to any important community information items that commissioners would like to share. Anyone?
I don't have anything today, thank you.
Okay. Is there any public comment that is not on the agenda? Oh, alright, moving on. One person discussion consideration. Alright, let's move on to the next item on the agenda. Discussion and consideration of the appointment of Stuart Francone and Kristen Bradfield to the tourism panel.
Adam, I don't know that Adam has joined yet.
Alright, can we move to the next item and then get back to that, or do we have to stay in order?
You do not have to stay in order.
Sure.
If the board is okay with that, we can wait until Adam comes and he can talk you through the tourism panel appointments, or I'm happy to talk through those.
You can.
I think Commissioner Elsa is informed as well.
So, um, the tourism panel is a group of people who are voted on by the panel to recommend to us to seat onto the panel. And the tourism panel back in December received lots of different, um, lots of folks who wanted to potentially serve on the panel. And from there, we voted on who we wanted to recommend to you all, and those two people are Kristen and Stuart. Stuart works with the HPC. He's been a resident of Leadville for fifteen years.
What is the HPC?
The Historic Preservation Commission for City Council. Kristen is new to town but comes with a deep marketing background, which is always really helpful for a working panel like the tourism panel. Anyway, the rest of the panel already voted that these were the people that they would like to serve with on the panel to make sure that all of the skills that they need as a panel are met. And I highly recommend both of them.
And in your packet, you have the staff memo and then the letters of interest from Stuart and Kristen.
Okay, well, they're the pros on the subject. I am willing to defer their judgment if they think it's a good fit for their needs. I trust them on that.
Then I would move to appoint Stuart Francone and Kristen Bradfield to the tourism panel.
I'll second the motion.
I will third that.
Is there any further discussion of the motion?
Is there any further discussion of the motion? No, let's call a vote.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Alright, that motion passes on a vote of three to zero, unanimous vote. Alright, moving on. Good to move on?
Yes.
Alright, discussion and consideration of the reappointment
Yep.
of Amy Tate and the appointment.
Here, look, just read this. I don't, I don't know the terminology, but it is the discussion and consideration. So just read.
Okay. Item number two on the agenda is the discussion, discussion and consideration of the reappointment of Amy Tate and the appointment of Sarah Mudge, Hal Edwards, and Adam Frige to the Board of Adjustments led by Anne Schneider. Anne, please introduce yourself and proceed with your comments.
Thank you so much, Anne Schneider, Director of Community Planning and Development. Thank you so much. Excuse me, the next two agenda items, thank you, I don't know where that one came from. These are statutorily authorized boards through Title thirty of Colorado Revised Statute. And the Board of Adjustment is, has some kind of unique powers and responsibilities. They are able to grant variances from the Land Development Code for dimensional standards, things like setback and height. They also have the ability to be the appellate board for any administrative decisions. So anything that is a land use application that is approved through CPD or any interpretations made by the zoning official. So they are an appellate board, they have the authority to grant variances or decisions and reverse administrative decisions. So Amy Tate has served on this board, it is, Tim Berry is the other member of the board. And both this board and the planning commission that we're going to talk about next, we really think that there is benefit in having a mix of seasoned veterans kind of of the boards and their volunteer positions, because these issues get kind of very complex at times. And so what we try to do is kind of have a good balance of experienced members and also newcomers on the boards to kind of bring in new perspective and ideas. We certainly don't ever want to close the door to bringing in new members of the community to serve on these boards. So Amy has shown a desire she has served as the chair. Kayla Marcello was on the board and she attended her resignation early. Amy Tate stepped in as chair, and she does have an interest in serving again this year. Then we've been in a position where we haven't had a full three-member board, or exactly, we have three regular members and two alternates. With Kayla's early departure, we only had, we did have an alternate, so we had three to maintain quorum. But this year, we are excited to say we're going to get back to a full five-member board with three regular members and two alternates. It's really hard not to have those alternates, a three-person board. So really excited to have Amy's interest to continue on as kind of that seasoned volunteer on there as well as the interest from Sarah Mudge and Hal Edwards, who obviously have had experience with the Land Development Code, understand the various process. And then Adam Froge is a member of Sylvan Lakes. He's in the construction industry, and there was a variance request within that subdivision recently, which really kind of sparked his interest. He was in the meeting, heard that we were looking for members, and so staff has met with anyone that is new to serving, kind of explain the expectation of how often these boards are called upon, particularly the Board of Adjustment last year of three times. So we don't take a lot of variance requests, and you know, they have to be very specific. So generally, they meet probably three to four times annually. So the recommendation moving, being brought to you today is to appoint Amy Tate as a regular member to the board, either Sarah Mudge or Hal Edwards as a regular member, and Adam Froge as an alternate to just give him some time to be acclimated to the board, and he will also be able to participate in all deliberation, all discussion. Alternates, the only thing that they don't participate is in the voting process unless one of the other voting regular members is unable to attend. So the recommendation is to appoint all four of these with this year's management resolution.
Okay, um.
Who decides who the members are and the commissioners?
I'm so sorry, I just want to practice perfect.
Thank you.
So because Andy is chair, and of course, something if I'm wrong, but because Andy is chair, he has to recognize one of us during discussion.
Got it.
Yeah.
Is there, so I start with the motion, and then is there any further discussion of the?
Now you're here. You'll need to call on other commissioners for them to speak, because now we're in.
Would either Commissioner Bullock or Commissioner Tharp like to have any further discussion on the subject? Alright, Commissioner Bullock?
Do you, who decides who the alternate members are and who the, and are the alternate members voting members, or?
So the alternate members become voting members if there is an quorum. A quorum is free. So if one of the regular members is unable to attend, then the chair will appoint the alternate at the beginning of the meeting as a voting member. The recommendation is coming both between a combination of the existing Board of Adjustment and staff for this year. And the final decision is certainly yours, you appoint them.
Commissioner Tharp?
Can I call on Commissioner Elsa?
Commissioner Elsa's.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Um, I'm sorry if I misunderstood this, but, and I think that you just asked this question. But how do we determine who is a regular member and who is an alternate?
So the recommendation being brought forward is that if the regular member that we would encourage you to consider would be someone that has had some knowledge of the Land Development Code and the process. So both Hal Edwards and Sarah Mudge both obviously have direct knowledge of the Land Development Code and the process. So we would suggest that they might have a still set that, an experience that might put them in a better position to be a regular member at your discretion. So that would be the recommendation, is just given the experience and knowledge, and this allows Adam time as an alternate, he still gets to fully participate in all discussion and experience, and he can put his input into the discussion portion. He just wouldn't be called on for the vote unless there's not a quorum. So the recommendation is to just maybe based on experience and expertise.
So there's no recommendation, so we decide. I get that Adam is recommended to be an alternate, absolutely.
And the recommendation for, was, I think, put out when we sent it out was for Amy and Tim and Sarah Mudge to serve as regular members, and Hal and Adam as alternates.
Okay, I move to reappoint Amy Tate and appoint Sarah Mudge as our regular seated, um, seated folks to the Board of Adjustment with Hal Edwards and Adam Froge as the alternates.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Alright, uh, let's call on, let's have a vote on that?
Yep.
Is there any further discussion of the motion?
No.
No.
Oh, alright, let's have a vote. I call a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion passes on a vote of three to zero, unanimous. Alright, we good to move on?
Yes.
Alright. Okay, item number three on the agenda is discussion and consideration of the reappointment of Heather Lynn and the appointment of David Urich and Ryan Hill to the Planning Commission led by Anne Schneider. Anne, please introduce yourself again and proceed with your comments, thank you.
Absolutely, Anne Schneider, Director of Community Planning and Development. And I would just make a slight modification in the language because sort of discussion and consideration of the reappointment of Heather Lynn and the reappointment of Jason Marufo and the appointment of David Jurich and Ryan Hill to the Planning Commission. And I have Jason's name on here, I can give you my paperwork, but it's helpful for the motion. But let me explain why. So we have two members expiring on the Planning Commission. Heather's term is, has, is expiring, or has expired, but she has shown interest in a reappointment. The other member sadly of our Planning Commission that is expiring is Howard Tritz. Howard Tritz has served for decades on our Planning Commission and obviously been iconic throughout the community as well as the county. He has chosen not to seek reappointment and to retire from the Planning Commission. Jason Marufo is a current member of the Planning Commission, but he serves as an alternate. Jason has an interest in becoming a regular member, and the Planning Commission, this recommendation is coming directly to you from the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is your advisory board on all land use matters. They will host your, and run and facilitate your joint public hearing with them on all land use applications. They are your land use experts who provide support and guidance and recommendations on the approval, approval condition, or denial of all land use applications. And so their recommendation is an appointment of regular membership to Heather to reinstate her, Jason Marufo to make him a regular member. And then your alternates are two new members that have shown interest. David Jurich is an engineer who lives and is now a full-time resident of the southern part of our county down in Twin Lakes, who has shown interest in serving on the board. Ryan Hill lives in the northern part of the county. Also, Ryan has a background in financial advisement, but has not served on the Planning Commission board, but has a genuine interest in all things related to the community. And so both of them, we are excited to say, are excellent candidates for alternate positions on the Planning Commission. And I would say this is, in both of these instances, everyone that applied is being considered for a position on these boards. So we have no potential applicants behind. This represents everyone that responded to the vacancies on the boards as well.
Alright, is there any further discussion from the commissioners on this topic? Alright, um, so is there a motion on the table for agenda item three?
I move to reappoint Heather Lynn and Jason Marufo, and appoint David Jurich and Ryan Hill as alternates to the Planning Commission.
I'll second the motion.
Alright, call a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, alright, that passed.
Do you have one other question for the board while I have your teaching? One thing that I didn't, I apologize, I didn't see wasn't on the, listed on the agenda, so I just asked Tim for direction. With the Board of Review, there are an appointment that needs to be made on the Board of Review that we had sit in, but it's not listed on the agenda.
I think it's under the general.
It's, yeah. I'm the next agenda item.
Oh, it's in the general.
It's in the general, okay.
Since it was just the one.
So, did you know if you wanted any comment on that or not, but it's there.
Yes, but if you, yeah. Because if, yeah, we don't give a walkthrough with the various appointments. Should the board have any questions on?
So proceed with the Board of Review?
Um, no, we're gonna go to the next agenda item, if you could hang on, I guess that would be.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Alright, well, agenda item three passes on a vote of three to zero, unanimous. Let's move on, agenda four, or, sorry, six? The next agenda item. Alright, item number six on the agenda is this discussion and consideration of the adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash three. A resolution setting regular meetings for the Board of County Commissioners and public postings led by County Manager Tim Bergman. Tim, please introduce yourself and proceed with your comments.
Thank you, Commissioner. We are actually on agenda item number four.
Oh my gosh, I skipped a page, huh? Rewind button there. Okay. Item number four on the agenda, let's get back on track here, sorry, is the discussion and consideration of the adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one. Twenty twenty-five County Board and Position Appointments led by County Manager Tim Bergman. Tim, please introduce yourself and proceed.
Thank you, Commissioner, my name is Tim Bergman, I serve as County Manager, and I will walk you through what is called the annual resolution or appointments resolution, so this is the first resolution before the board to adopt. It's annual, happens every year, starts at the beginning of the year. So in your packet, you know, it was outlined in the memo, but just touching on a couple of reasons of why we do this. So there's legal and regulatory compliance, so there's, you know, various statutory boards that we need to fill, now this is the place where we can do that. There's consistency and transparency, which thanks to Operation Director Liz Miller, we now know everybody's terms and term limits and when we need to be prepared. So for property record-keeping, but also transparency to the public who is appointed to the boards, reflects any changes on those boards or for, you know, county needs. Then, you know, we'll have a discussion probably in the next couple of months with our water program manager and the Water Advisory Council. That is something that would be part of this resolution, so it reflects our, reflects a change. It does strengthen community engagement, because you do appoint members of our community to sit on advisory boards for you, various things from Recreation Airport Planning Commission. And then it is just a nice place to keep everything and have that document available. So with that, we can walk you through each of the appointments. Do you want to add anything on what a whereas is and why we whereas?
So, just for format, the pro forma of the resolutions or stuff, the recitals essentially explain why you are going to resolve to take the actions that follow after being out there for. So typically, your whereas are going to have the introductory statements as to your desire to do something, and then the others kind of reference your authority to do that. And in some instances, you know, the nature of the resolution will also cite to the statutory provisions. In this instance, each of the appointments will cite to, if there are statutory provisions for that authority, what the appointment is being made subject to. Any questions on that?
It's like an old school way of saying because, yes.
When you start to get it into your regular language, people will notice. Alright, um, so first one, Board of County Commissioners. So pursuant to your state statute, the board will elect a chair to preside at all meetings of the board and sign all county orders concerning matters submitted to the board or connected with its powers and duties, and elect a vice chair to preside in the absence of the chair at all meetings of the board and to sign all county orders concerning matters submitted to the board or connected with its powers or duties. So we've talked about this a little throughout this week, right, running of the meetings. And then there will be times, so when we have a resolution ordinance proclamation before the board, it's going to be all three signatures. But for contracts, most contracts will be, will have the chair being the signature authority. Is there anything else I can answer for you before the board deliberates and chooses?
Nope.
Uh, request for information.
Sure.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so what is the format of this, of how we, how we move to adopt, to vote on these? Are we doing them one at a time? Do we keep track of all of our discussion and then move as a whole?
The latter, it is a single resolution with each of the different appointments. But yeah, you can discuss each part of the resolution and make your decisions, and then at the end, based on that discussion, someone may file, you know, a motion to approve all the appointments as submitted during the discussion.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Do we have to wait for a motion?
So we're, we get to, yeah, we get to discuss all of our appointments, it's going to take a minute. And then at the end, Chris, tell me if I'm not understanding this correctly, but we get to move as one, one movement to resolve all of that discussion?
Yeah, to adopt the resolution.
To adopt the resolution. So we don't have to do this one thing at a time.
Yeah, you don't have, you don't, you don't have to, to vote on each appointment. You can have that discussion come to a consensus, at least, on each of those, we vote, and then at the end, someone, one of you can move to adopt the resolution.
During this phase, do we have to ask, does Andy have to recognize us, or is this a free conversation?
I think it can be more important, it can be a free conversation, just to expedite the, for time purposes and stuff.
For expedition purposes, I'd like to go by district, one, two, three. So Andy would be the chair, I'm in District Two, I'd be the vice chair. Elsa would be the third, and then every year around the same time.
We just click it.
It just shuffles over, and that makes it fair.
That sounds great.
For the next two years.
As fluent as Commissioner Elsa is in this foreign language, I'm attempting to learn here. I'm okay with that as well.
I think that's a great idea.
That was not my idea.
And just to clarify, staff's keeping track of what our decision is, or should I?
We're gonna do it to them.
We're gonna fill it out as we go?
Yeah.
Yes. Well, my computer won't turn on.
Has it turned on yet today?
Yeah, it was on this morning, and now it just doesn't, I'm sorry.
May I? Okay, then County Manager can be Tim, and County Attorney can be Chris. Are we all agreed on that?
County Manager, Tim Bergman, he's doing a fine job.
It's done, right, yeah, it's done.
Chris Lloyd, fine, excellent work.
Thank you.
Have you only highlighted what we get to decide, is that what I'm interpreting?
You're gonna decide, you do get to decide all of it, but we are the ones highlighted that where you guys are, yeah.
Yeah, great.
Yes.
Just want to interpret that correctly.
Yep.
Great, agreed with all of that?
Look straight.
Awesome.
I shook it.
And if you have questions on any of these, please do ask. And if you have questions on the appointments or understanding why we do it, those kind of things, please, please let us know.
Is anything here changing from how it has been previously set up aside from the commissioner appointments?
No.
Okay.
Except for, I mean, on this page now, it will be the, you know, the various board appointments that we'll work through. Where you see where we put commissioners, that's all of you. So you do sit as the Local Liquor Licensing Authority, Local Marijuana Licensing Authority, and we do propose that you all sit as the Board of Health.
I fully agree with that.
I also recommend that we keep Julia Johansson as our Public Health Director and Dr. Surlinger as our Medical Officer.
Yeah.
Emergency and Disaster Management, we have our OEM Director.
Yes.
Emergency Response Authority for hazardous substances incidents would be Chief Daley. Here we are.
Who is interested in serving on the Fire Management Board?
I'm interested.
Awesome.
I'd like to focus on roads, fire, buildings, and water.
We call those hard assets maybe.
Awesome.
Um, I do, yeah, well, it's, for, right now, it's, uh, fire, if you're having interest in that and it's, and you're motivated, I, uh, I like that, yeah.
Andy, you're interested too?
Um, he mentioned a handful of things and we'll just cross those bridges.
I meant in this one.
Um, don't, I, I would fully defer to Matt's expertise in this, that subject.
Okay.
And for, you know, for, for a lot of these as well, all of you, of course, are welcome to attend these meetings and be a part of it, but as a Commissioner representative to the Fire Management Board, you're there with me, um, and will, you know, work through any issues with, uh, fire and emergency response there and then we bring those things back to the full Board. If you're interested, wanna see how a meeting goes, come along. But Commissioner Bullard?
We're non-voting members, is that correct? Or do they even vote, is just an advisory board?
It's advisory, they make recommendations. Uh, so the Fire Management Board makes recommendations on the budget because the budget is subject to approval of City Council and to the Board of County Commissioners. Um, you know, there are some operational, uh, discussions that happen or project planning, especially around mitigation, um, staffing levels, um, and those kind of things, so that the Fire Management Board can kind of come to a decision, but it does need, if it's a, um, recommendation for a decision, it needs to come back to the full Board of County Commissioners. Uh, state statute provides that the Sheriff is the Fire Warden, Keith would like to still be that. Uh, in the past, previous sheriffs have delegated that, um, but Sheriff Beckman, um, is not, or would like to not do that. All right, Andy, wanna talk about fire code adoption and revision commission? Or just provide an overview? Or if the Commissioners, do you have a question on, on this one or does it make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, so the building official oversees the administration of the building code, but the fire code, um, is overseen, um, by the Fire Chief and Fire Marshal.
So it'll be all three of you with Chief Daley and with Ann. E nine one one Authority, um, kind of discuss the genesis of this, um, and then the folks who are appointed. So it is a representative from St. Vincent Hospital District, uh, Fire, Police, Sheriff, OEM Director, and then the City Administrator and I sit as ex officio on that Board. Planning Commission. Is there anything that you wanna add, Ann, about Planning Commission or any, any thoughts, Commissioner, that you've had since you just made appointments to it?
Yeah.
Reappointments, okay. We will have one more trainings on all of these. Board of Adjustment.
That was quick.
Liz is real fast.
Diane, girl, right?
Yeah. Board of Review, uh, you wanna talk about this one, Ann?
Absolutely, um, so, um, our expiring members of the Board of Review were Matt Bullard and Hope Colitz, Hope has, does not have an interest in serving on the Board again. However, Matt did, um, indicate that he would, uh, like to extend his membership on, um, the Board of Review. We are currently, um, we have been actively, um, looking to, uh, find more membership on this. We register our general contractors, we have a really great database and we have been going out and, um, kind of canvassing the local industry to see if we can get more Board members. However, so we do have some vacancies on here, but what we have currently is a, in the form um, of the Board of Review, your Board of Review is your building industry experts. Um, some of the biggest lifts that they have is the adoption, um, bringing forth the recommendation of the adoption of the building code. So, um, we adopt a model code pursuant to, or in accordance with the ICC. Um, but what we do locally is create a resolution that considers cer- certain, um, variations or deviations from that model code specific to our local industry and climate and just, just the manner in which the building industry feels that it is, uh, more appropriate to, um, adopt those model codes. On the other, uh, uh, this Board also serves as an appellate board as well. So any, um, administrative decision or interpretation by the building official um, can be, um, challenged through an appeal process and this is the Board that hears those appeals. So that is, they are a statutorily authorized Board as well and this is the membership that we have thus far. If we're able to fill those vacancies, if some talk about, uh, site modifications, we'll, we'll look to bring a resolution for appointing new members if we're able to recruit. So if you know anyone in the local trades, that would be, um, a great voice on this Board. We'd love to have, um, to fill those vacancy positions, but we're starting the year off with a Board that can make decisions in a forum.
So, can I, um, when a vote comes up, if you've got four people there, what happens if they're split down the middle? You just explained it, I'm sorry if it went over my head, but.
Um, so, you know, we're, we're hoping, um, a, it, it is a, I have to look at our bylaws to see how we make, um, a, again, I actually can't answer that question right at this second without looking at the bylaws that, um, determine how if we would have a split. Well, keep in mind that this Board is not going to, I've never had an appeal in the, my tenure with the eleven years that I've been in the county. Um, and we're not gonna be ready for adoption of a building code for, um, you know, we're gonna start talking about it this year, but we probably aren't going to be ready to start taking any votes on anything, um, till, you know, probably towards the last quarter.
We got time.
So we've got a little time, but honestly, to answer that, I, I don't have the quick answer because I doubt the bylaws, um, if we have a split, but very good point. We do have a quorum, but if we had a split decision on a vote, which is, as Matt experiences, he's pretty aware, that's really kind of uncommon. Uh, we don't usually go to, uh, vote on the recommendation for a motion until, uh, we do have consensus built on decision making, but, um, but really great point and I can get back to you on that.
Cool, doesn't sound like it's gonna be an issue anytime soon.
Yeah.
I think, I think we're good, you, you have time to fill that spot.
May I suggest we find a plumber and HVAC guy, like maybe Carlos, and just put his name in there temporary?
He'd love that. But, but ironically enough, um, he did, um, show some interest. So we would, we would pass the want to him that he could have a conversation or we'd be happy to, to, that his name came up today and maybe he should pursue, such that.
Yeah, that'd be good.
So when you do, if you do find someone, then you'll come back to us to actually officially appoint, to fill those vacancies.
Correct, yes, we'll need a supplemental application resolution in order to, to do the appointment.
Thanks, Ann.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
More Ann? Uh, propose that Ann is, well, in her job, she is this, but appointing Ann as the County Building and Zoning Official.
Um, so historically, the Director of the Department has worn both those hats. So, do you have some thoughts about this in the future, um, to add capacity? Um, but for now, um, you know, historically, the Director of the Department has always served in these two capacities, so as a zoning official, um, having the authority over the land development code and any interpretations, um, associated with that and the building code as well. Um, in capacity, i- i- in that role as the, uh, building official, I do wanna let you know, again, Matt has knowledge of this. I lean heavily, um, the administrative part, uh, I feel, to have a strong expertise around that. As far as when we get into technical code issues, I do work closely with code consultants right now. That's, um, Schumskoda and Steve Thomas. Steve Thomas is a known educator throughout the nation of building code. Um, so I do, um, many of those types of decisions. I would also go to my Board of Review, my industry experts, and then my code experts. Um, but that is the role that the Director has always filled and so far, I think it's been successful.
Thank you, Ann. We have Council Member Hill and Jackie Wheelahan here to answer any questions that you might have about, uh, that regional, Leadville Lake County Regional Housing Authority. Jackie did prepare a presentation, we can go through that if you want, um, but, uh, wow, it's super high level, the Regional Housing Authority was created by, um, the City of Leadville in Lake County and the County, uh, appoints two members, the City appoints two members, um, and at least one of those out of each body. It's, you know, City needs to appoint one elected official, County needs to appoint at least one elected official. Um, so, uh, Commissioner Fiedler and Commissioner Mudge, obviously, are no longer on the Housing Authority Board, so it is up to, uh, Board to decide who would like to be on that and, uh, anything you wanna add? By me?
You said, you said it very well. Um, it's a four-year term, um, for the County Representatives on the Board and then there are two at-large member, um, vacancies right now that's being, um, heavily advertised in the neighbor, um, and on their digital platform as well. So, um, at the next meeting, which is on the twenty-fourth, um, hopefully there'll be some applicants that you can select or at-large.
The next meeting is actually on the twenty-nine, sorry. Which is next Wednesday. Um, I see you only have one spot.
Yeah, well, the XX was, and now XX was meant to be two, but.
Okay.
There we go.
Um, so the County does need to appoint two members, one of which has to be an elected. Um, Tim, Tim Bergman has actually sat on this Authority as a non-elected member of the County, but I don't think he wants to do that anymore.
Respectfully declined.
I would love to serve on this, on the Regional Housing Authority.
It's in keeping with my, uh, goals as well, so I'd volunteer myself.
Nice.
All right.
And just as a, as a heads up for the next meeting, which is on Wednesday, we, we have a couple urgent things, or actually one very urgent thing that we need to accomplish. Um, I need to appoint officers, um, Vice President, Chair, Secretary will be the officers. Sorry, Chair, Vice, sorry. President, Vice President and Secretary are the officer positions. I'm currently serving as the Vice President, um, taking over, Sarah was the, Sarah Mudge was the President, so I'll be leading the next meeting, but we need to elect officers and we need to appoint a grievance committee because there is a lottery coming up for the ten thousand two hundred housing project and any grievances that arrive through that application process needs to be, um, addressed by the grievance committee and that all has to happen by February tenth. Um, so it's urgent that we form that committee and get that, get that thing rolling.
All right, is that evening meeting too?
It is a five thirty, typically, I have a five thirty and a seven thirty.
I'll do it Sunday.
On the third of these days of every month. On, at least we need to push this one back because, um, there is only three Board members at the, currently, so. We're also, um, actively looking for a Executive Director of the Authority and I have been in contact with Zoe to get that job posted. Hasn't been posted yet, so. And the way that position, sorry. But we are looking for an ED for that company. So the way that position worked is in agreement between the City and the County. So the City with the two-way funding, uh, that was passed in twenty twenty-one, pays for salary, the majority of the, most of the salary. Um, that position is a county employee and we have a lending agreement with the RHA. And, uh, when I say it's a county employee, that means that they're entitled to the county's benefits. Um, you know, office space, that kind of support doesn't report to me, doesn't report to the Board of County Commissioners, it reports to the Regional Housing Authority Board. Um, however, I mean, unless we can find other space for them, you know, the person kind of, you know, works either out of the annex or if I can find room in the courthouse, um, but perhaps they live at City Hall, I don't know where else they could live, work from, live. Um, but that, that's how that position works, just, just so you're aware.
Is that a recent vacancy or is that a new position?
Um, no, the passage of two A and the creation of the Regional Housing Authority did provide for an Executive Director. Um, Jackie took that on, um, two years? A year, two, one, eighty years.
Two and a half, very, very, half years.
Yes, um, so Jackie was the inaugural ED, um, and then an opportunity that she applied for and went through the process where the County came up, so she left that position. So that position's been vacant for a while, um, and as the Regional Housing Authority goes through some growing pains, but I think, I think all the Board members recognize that you, you need a staffer. Yeah, we, uh, we did deliberate on whether or not to, um, continue having a Director and, um, came to consensus and there's plenty of work there, um, to facilitate a, a Director.
All right.
Commissioner Bullard, Commissioner Elsa, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
And, uh, we'll, we'll push out an invitation to that meeting. We'll have that on the calendar.
Okay. All right.
All right, moving on. So, Board of Equalization. So the County has provided through statute that the Board of each County shall, the Board of Equalization shall comprise the Board of Equalization of such county, the Board of Commissioners shall comprise the Board of Equalization of such county. Um, so we've touched on this a little bit and we will spend more time on what the CBOE, the County Board of Equalization is, but this is a place for, uh, property owners to come and, um, protest, uh, their, uh, valuations. So we suggest, so there's, there's, there's two parts to this one and I hope Chris can help me with the second one with the arbiters. Um, so you all will sit as the Board of Equalization and we're also proposing that you appoint, uh, County Board of Equalization arbiters.
Yes, and so what that's for is essentially, and, and we actually have more than one person who we recommend for, to be the arbiters and there, there's since arbitrators who, if there is, uh, if the Board of Equalization does not, uh, the property owner's not happy, you can go to, essentially, what's an arbitration and then the arbiter steps in to hear that and make the decision as to the resolution of that matter.
Okay.
And we do, I was saying, oh.
You have else.
It's the, the, the next one, the actual resolution for the arbitrators is.
So it's actually.
Three of them are on there.
So there's a separate, yeah, cuz this, this was in there and I think originally was just, that was a, to be determined because you have a separate resolution appointing these three other individuals that we've headed for that role, so.
And their, uh, qualifications are noted in the packet.
Yeah, they resume all that kind of stuff, very.
So do we need to move to adopt Resolution number four?
Oh, not yet, no, we'll do that after this, but then we'll go back and fill in.
That'll be number five, the three folks that, if you accept their, their provincial schools as well.
Tourism Panel, uh, thank you, Commissioner Elsa, for giving that overview. Adam, Adam apologized, he was, uh, down in sanitation at a meeting, that's why he was late, but these are your folks who are on the, uh, Tourism Panel. The County Public Library, uh, so there are different models throughout the state of Colorado on libraries, so there could be a city library, a library district, uh, or a county library. Um, it is, uh, uh, Lake County and Summit County, I think are one of the few or maybe the only two that actually have a, um, county library. Um, so it is a, it is a county department. Um so it is a, it is a county department. However, um the um, there is uh, did you call them an advisory board or?
Yeah, I think they're, they're, they're actually statutorily, it's a, they're statutory board, they're that one.
Their board, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, the library board essentially.
Yeah. Um and they meet uh once a month, I think it's first Tuesday, uh in the evenings. Um and then, yeah, so Brenna Smith is your library director. I said Ex officio on that board as well, um and then those community members uh expressed an interest to be on the board. So there, I talked about this a little bit uh with you uh earlier, so resolution two thousand one dash seventy-three. Um if you guys beat that record in twenty twenty-five, that'll be very impressive, seventy-three resolutions. Um but anyway, so the commissioners at that time established an airport advisory board uh with community members um and interested folks on that. Um it's kind of through fits and starts in my tenure here. Um I've had, it filled up, people roll off, people come on. Um. So we have two members right now who are on there. The, the board itself, the Airport Advisory Board, is doing a little bit of soul-searching on if they should exist.
Hmm.
Um because we now have more staff, right? So like actually Josh Adamsum is our airport director, he has two folks under him. So we actually have folks with the skills and experience like running the airport. It's no longer the airfield with a constant hut on it. Um so that board, I imagine that Jeff and Mike, um and then also like Michael Irwin and Josh Adamsen will probably come back at some point this year and they'll have a recommendation for you of if we keep this uh Airport Advisory Board, um or if there's a recommendation, especially from Jeff and Mike of like, you know, maybe the time has come to, to end it.
Does anybody, that must have been right after nine eleven. Does anybody know the history of like why it was created?
Um my guess would be because this is the time period where uh conversations about the Community Justice Center or Port Hub renovations and also economic development heavily started in this community.
Hmm.
Um just from my research looking back at old resolutions. So I imagine that it was tied to of like, hey, we have this asset.
Yeah.
What are we gonna do?
Okay, cool.
Um is my assumption, but we'll need to go back to that resolution to see for sure.
Yeah, I have, I have resolution one, zero one dash seven three pulled up and it essentially sounds like that because the board owns and operates the airport. Um and it recognizes that operating the airport, the board often deals with issues where there's a need of advice and guidance. And um if the board recognizes that great wealth and knowledge and experience regarding the operation, the airport rests within the community of Lake County. And uh for the, they desire to appoint an advisory board that identifies the board on certain airport issues and also to create bylaws and lists the advisory board lacks. So it sounds like as Tim was describing, we didn't have the staff expertise, if you will, in operating the airport and then folks that operated airplanes out of there.
Yeah, we.
So I think that's what led to the creation of this advisory board.
It's just interesting timing, you know?
Yes.
Yeah. And if this board, if the Board of County Commissioners, if you guys um, you know, do determine that you guys want this, then alright, we will, you know, continue with it, but that'll be, you know, conversation with the Airport Advisory Board and staff coming up. For creation advisory board. Duncan has two members now. Uh Matt Main has been our mainstay. Uh he is a very uh good and dedicated member to this community and to this board, but I think a similar conversation. Um as, as to that Airport Advisory Board. Um so I think there's some opportunities perhaps, like with the Mineral Belt Trail Committee, uh some of the other assets under Duncan of perhaps it's a little bit broader than just recreation. Um or it includes like some of those assets in there.
Hmm.
Like maybe running the lopet, uh things like that. So if we need to have, we've uh recruited during my tenure here, yes, this um, this uh Rec Advisory Board has like waxed and waned uh in its membership. Um so I think we'll have that conversation a little bit on later this year of like, is this still needed? If yes, what kind of community input do we want to make this uh um, I don't know, sexier, some people are on it.
No.
Um, yeah.
I know, I didn't, haven't had a chance to talk with Duncan about this, but other um areas, sometimes these boards often serve to, to explore potential funding outside of government funding for certain assets or amenities that you might desire as part of the recreation facilities.
I really appreciate you not using the full word.
Yes.
What, what?
And, and that's, and, and, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I'll write it down.
Yeah. Um anyway, so there, there may be a, a different type of purpose for this than what may have been originally intended.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, that's a good point and I think in my looking back on this, I, I recently learned what placer was and then kind of where the Rec Advisory Board came from.
Placer. Mm-hmm.
And I think a lot of it too was out of um getting like a skate park, the pump track, the shooting ranges, the dirt bike track, right? Now those are all up and going, in community field, yes, now those are all up and going.
Community field. Yes. Yeah.
So we have the assets now.
Yeah.
We need to manage them, um so I think that's a part of it as well, um so.
Um you know, I, I, I know everyone sitting at this table right here is very passionate about this subject
Mm-hmm.
on multiple levels where it's participation or it's future directions for this county, especially, you know, revenue, um tourism, everything. So like, you know, I do see this as a, it's got strings and webs that reach out to a lot of different, really important subjects for this community. Um so, you know, just definitely keep us abreast on everything that's going on with this. When you say it's in the same limbo as the airport, I have concerns about that, but I also need to educate myself more to learn the pros and cons. If that goes away, who's really having the input and are all voices being heard? You know, I've seen recreational segments of this community go unheard in the past when decision-making regarding county facilities. So in the interest of equitable representation of all recreation segments, you know, I just would really like to have as many deep dives into this as we can.
Yeah, that's a great point. I know Duncan and his team have um ideas on that, so that feedback is good and helpful. Um yeah, I mean if you have, if there are community members who are interested in Rec Advisory Board, you know, they can join up. Be like, this, I really don't like the way this, this is structured, right? That comes to you guys, like, oh, maybe there should be another structure.
When we talk about board priorities, I'm sure this is gonna come up, like Andy said, we can see if this is a tool that we could use to push our priorities forward.
Sure.
Yeah.
Right, Christopher Hill, Board of Directors.
I nominate Commissioner um Lee.
I'll second that.
Alright. Good luck, Commissioner.
Thank you. Hey, it's, I'm up for it.
It's good, yes.
I like everyone involved.
Yes, good. Um Mount Massive Golf Club uh currently is Duncan, Parks, Rec and Open Space and Goal Director. Uh if one of you would like to join, feel free. If you wanted to be a commissioner, I, I don't know if that would upset Duncan. Um but uh up to you guys.
One area of recreation, I'm very inexperienced at, so I would.
And the only thing I would suggest is if you decide that one of you would like to, to serve in that role is that it needs someone who has the capacity to actually be active with that.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
We can show up, but if, and I'm okay with Duncan.
Yeah.
You're okay with that, Duncan?
Yeah. Alright, so currently we have it listed for the Intermountain Transportation Planning Region as all three of you. Um if you wanted to be just one of you, that is fine, but uh what we would ask, um so the IT, the IMTPR, the acronym for it, um is a very important place to get funding for infrastructure projects. Uh that's where we got the funding for the transportation and mobility project that Anne's team is leading. That's where we received the funding uh for the transit service uh that we launched recently. So it is a very great place to advocate for Lake County and its priorities for uh everything C dot. Um. Yeah, prior to this, Commissioner Fiedler was the representative. Uh and then uh from the city, Mayor Green is on there. Um but it is a, this is a place to get money um for Lake County.
So are you saying that we should appoint one of us or just let that sit for a minute and let all three of us do it until a later date?
Um I guess I'm saying both, because the important thing for the IMTPR is like the consistency in going to the meetings and advocating for Lake County, which I have no doubt that all three of you will do.
Yeah.
Um I do think it's a great place to learn. Um talk about moving at the speed of government, that is the Colorado Department of Transportation. Um so and maybe we should have started this whole presentation with, and I, I know we've discussed it um as uh you know, perhaps in June, we revisit this, be like, I can't handle Steve Cooper. Or I wanna make changes, or the board wants to make changes. So I would be comfortable for now with all three of you going, or at least ensuring that one of you goes to those meetings.
I'll volunteer for that one.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you.
We can also put it as Commissioner Bullock or des, or they're designated type of thing.
Okay.
So that there's an opportunity for one of you to play back at the P D's.
Yeah.
Yeah, you just let us know when you can't make it.
Roads, 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 pavement.
Love it.
So I uh currently sit on the EDC uh Steering Committee. And then I know Commissioner Elsa, you had talked about with uh what does the, the county's board seat uh look like on the EDC? So they're no longer doing the membership-based seats. We do have Adam Ducharme who does sit on the Economic Development Corporation or EDC Board. However, he is representing it from the tourism panel perspective. We do have another county staffer, Anne's Deputy Melissa Kendrick on there, but she's just representing herself and as a former business owner.
But we pay a membership fee, or does the tourism panel only pay the membership fee?
Um that part I haven't quite uh figured out. Um so I think as you guys know, the, the county has heavily um subsidized the EDC over the past twelve years, eleven years. Eleven years. Um we do not fund it at that amount anymore. And I think it is up to um you guys and, and so the, the format that I've learned is now there's um there uh, it's like kind of like an application for it and then the EDC Board um vets those and then they make their decisions kind of similar to the tourism panel.
Mm-hmm.
So there's no longer really a dedicated county seat.
Mm-hmm.
Um I have all of that material and that, but I, I didn't send it to you guys cuz I wanted to have this discussion first on kind of those transitions that the EDC has gone through and where it's at. Um so.
If, if I can just chime in, they did, did go through some bylaws or revisions and stuff that changed the structure. And so actually directors are, are elected by the members.
Hmm.
So they aren't, they aren't, and they're elected by the members and the officers are appointed by the board of directors and stuff. So in this instance, as Tim's saying, the county, because it's no longer a, um leader or funding member, if you will, would not automatically have a seat on the board.
Hmm.
You would essentially have to indicate an interest in being on the board representing the county. The thing about that though is it's unlike Melissa, who's on there in her own individual capacity. If you have a county representative, that means that that person can be, is appointed by the county and can be changed by the county, not the EDC. So that is one little distinction there than the county. If the county essentially runs for a seat on the board of directors, it's not specific to just that individual. Um it would be whoever the county appoints to sit in that role, which here is the recommendation would be, be the county manager for the Steering Committee.
Right, which is totally different.
From the board, yeah.
So Adam represents the tourism panel.
On the board.
Which is the county.
That's where.
That's the difference there.
That's where it's getting a little.
Yeah, that's where Adam's uh right, his, his, his hats are two different hats, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Cuz he was originally part of it, right, as the tourism director and then.
Right, and then he became a county employee.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um so I.
I've, I mean, I understand in the Steering Committee, I think you should continue on as the representative.
Correct.
Personally.
And so since the, the seat on the board is no longer a given, that's not something y'all would point at this point in time.
Right. Right.
Somebody would have to actually run for elections, you're right.
Mm-hmm, but we're not.
Which is different.
We're not actually a member, but we do, we are a member.
Yeah, we, we based on, well, and I've, I've got a question out to the executive director on that in terms of the county's contribution for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, how that rolls, if it's still existing for this year
Like does it?
so that y'all would still technically have a seat on the board for twenty twenty-four, uh, or it's not a seat.
Yeah. Could get elected on it.
You would have, yeah, a membership that would allow you to, to run for the board for twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
So I'm ready to go back.
Okay, I would be really, I would love to serve on the EDC again.
Okay.
If we had, I would love to run for a seat on the EDC if our membership is still.
And here's the thing is that even if it's not, it is a standard flat figure membership now.
Right.
It's not this large scale, yeah.
Like a hundred bucks, right?
So you might even wanna consider just having the county have a membership to the EDC, which would open that opportunity to run for the board.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Climax Community Partnership Panel, uh so we'll have Nell Wareham here next week is the community rep uh from Climax, um do you wanna talk to her? Surprise, um so the community, the Climax Community Partnership Panel, this is the grant making. Yes, so Climax every year uh in communities that they impact, so Eagle Summit, Us Park. I don't know if Grand is still in it, but Clear Creek where the Henderson Mill is. Anyway, so they set aside uh funding every year. Um and then this uh Climax Community Partnership Panel uh votes on grant applications. So the, last year, right, St. Vincent got a grant for a new ambulance, uh other communities. So you basically you vote on other communities' um grant applications to Climax.
But it is good to have that input with the county having that input.
Yes, yes.
Participation on that panel, definitely wanna continue that.
Well, thank you, Lauren. Keep us posted.
Do one of you want to do it?
Uh I'd volunteer for that one.
Yeah, me too.
I would wanna learn more about it before. Yeah.
Elsa's interested.
Yeah, Elsa.
Yeah, there are other, there's some other things I think I'd, I'd prioritize over that, but I'd be curious. So go for it, Matt, if you even more wanna talk that through.
Is it for multi-meetings or is it just a, I mean, I don't wanna get myself overcommitted to all these things.
Yeah.
But I am interested in Climax minded.
Yeah, and it's not, I was gonna say, it's not about, it doesn't have that link to necessarily Climax's operations and stuff. If that's what you're learning more about, and not the vehicle for it.
I see. It's a grant steering committee.
Yeah, it is, it is who.
Decision.
Yeah, the decision-making panel for the grant funding that Climax provides.
I see. Would this, well, that sounds like, uh, sorry, man.
Oh, um, uh would this give us insight as to like why there's Climax-funded projects happening in Summit County that I think we could have used here, like as a higher, you know, if you look at
Mm-hmm.
what they have accessible down there versus what we have accessible and the, the sort of equity there. Um would this give us more insight into that and maybe even some uh sway on some of that?
Potentially.
Potentially, yes.
Well, again, I'll, I'll do it.
We can do again, um Commissioner or the designee in that way, one could be your backup if we needed.
Okay, that sounds good.
And we are working on uh getting tours set up for you all of Climax. Um Mount Albert Power Station, the Leadville Mine Drainage Tunnel, uh so you can see all the cool things.
Yeah.
Emergency Services Council, so this is run through the Office of Emergency Management, it meets quarterly. This brings together all emergency responders, um nonprofit leadership and all of that. It's kind of like a roundtable, uh providing updates, uh networking, learning who folks are and all of that. So traditionally, we have had all commissioners attend or all commissioners invited and we would like for you all to attend.
Nice.
Uh similar for Forest Health Council, this is one probably like mid-year, if you guys will decide on the. Not my jam, my jam, but Forest Health Council, Harmony Jump from the Conservation District coordinates this, um so this talks about. All things related to our forests, including mitigation efforts, grant funding. And how we can move forward with uh implementing the Community Wildfire Protection Plan.
Definition of forests is, does this encompass State Forest BLM, everything with trees on it or is it?
Yeah. It does and it, so it brings together all of those land managers as well, so you have representatives from BM BLM, State Forest Service. US Forest Service, private property owners as well, who own large, large tracts of land. That and then of course the county, we own a lot of land here with trees on it.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Upper Arkansas Head Water Association and the Arkansas Basin Roundtable, my recommendation would be to appoint Bryce. As our Water Program Manager. Um you know commissioners who are interested, I would encourage you to go to those meetings with Bryce, um but it is very valuable. For Bryce to hear the technical updates and then bring them back for Anne, for Michael, for me, and for the whole board.
This is also a great forum for grant funding, underwater stuff, so awesome.
Thank you, Bryce, yeah, works for me.
And I just wanted to touch on the Upper Arkansas Head Water Association, that is kind of a regional partnership. Um led by the AHRA, Arkansas Head Waters Recreation Authority. But it ties in because it's, the Arkansas Head Waters Recreation Authority is. A bunch of linked water infrastructure that is owned by big players. So there's what's called the Voluntary Flow Management Program, it comes through Lake County, it starts here, our reservoirs are what control it. And that's a coordination amongst a bunch of water suppliers to manage flows on the Arkansas, to ensure uh success of the fishery. Recreational building industry, et cetera, so. It's led by the HRA, but it's very much water infrastructure related.
There's a big agricultural component to that too as well.
Absolutely, yes, they are. They're the big players, very vocal, yeah.
I am interested in tagging along though uh with you to the meetings.
Yes, I.
Learning as much as I can about it.
I would love for you guys to come, the next uh roundtable meeting is February twelfth.
Thank you. Lake County Open Space Initiative or LUCOSI, um so LUCOSI went through some uh transitions over the past couple of years, but now it is a. Um we're kind of uh a forum for stakeholders and folks to get together, um so. Sheriff Duncan's deputies uh over open space facilitates that meeting, again, it brings together um. All the land managers in our region, it also brings together all the water um folks in our region as well, so it's a good place to learn updates from partners. Uh changes that they're going through and then also of course you know to advocate for Lake County's open space.
I just don't.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I that's, that's one of the most successful, that was kind of created from scratch in Lake County about twenty-five years ago and it's incredibly successful. Very informal um way for all the partners involved in this county, you know, Pueblo has a representative that usually comes Aurora too, so. It's a way for outsiders that um have interest in Lake County to have an equal say at a table where it's a very informal discussion and we can. We had a lot of success collaborating and creating bigger projects and that, uh making sure we're not, you know, duplicating efforts and things like that. So I would really encourage you guys to kind of start coming to LUCOSI because it's, it's a really good way to learn. Uh it's it's not just about forest, it's about kind of environmental health in general and how it all ties together.
How often are those meetings?
Uh once a quarter.
Once a quarter. Could you give us an example of someone who would fall under the definition of outsider?
Like the the representative of Aurora Water.
Okay.
They own a bunch of water in Lake County and some land, but you know they're not, they don't have the authority to sit on boards and to vote on things.
Okay, my my concern is somehow jumped ahead of like outs-out of area land developers or something of that nature, but.
I mean, it's a way for them to come and present ideas and to, you know, have a bigger forum for what they're, but it's it's not, none of the decisions are binding.
Yeah.
It's more just a discussion, but very valuable.
Sweet, thanks, Bryce.
Upper Arkansas Area Council of Governments or COG, our COG, Council of Governments. So the state uh created the COGS across the, the state legislature created the COGS across the state and the regions that we are in. There are varying models of how a COG works, how a COG COG operates, the dues paid in, the services received uh from the COG. Um currently, our Council of Governments uh is going through. Uh. A not great situation, um. Uh the anyway, not great situations, so currently, uh so Lauren has been our proxy to that. Um traditionally, it's been one commissioner, um so.
Yeah, I feel like we do need to have one of you step up to do that, the city has representation and uh Mayor Green is their representative. Um meetings are virtual, if you need them, they're usually once a month, uh they've recently been trying to hold them in Salida. As kind of a middle place for folks to go to, um but yeah, they're uh they're in some financial. And legal distress, so it is a little bit of a project, um but you're, you'll be with commissioners from Chaffee, Fremont, um. Who else am I missing?
Uh Custer.
Custer Counties, um as well as municipalities within there, so um. Can, would anybody like to chime in?
I will, I will jump into that if. Sounds like a mess, I like cleaning up messes, so. Good job, Ed.
Thank you. Region Five Opioid Abatement Council, you'll learn more about this next week when uh Public Health comes and presents on it, um. May may not be aware, uh the United States and Colorado as well, it's an opioid crisis, uh substance use disorder and abuse. Problems, um so the Region Five was created as part of the um settlement uh received from the. Uh pharmacy makers who created the opioids and pushed them uh on on folks. So the uh previous board elected that the, let that Lake County keep its share of those opioid funding dollars. Which is about five K a year, however, we can make five K go pretty far in Lake County. Currently, our Deputy Director of Public Health is our representative um at that council. Um which helps make uh decisions or kind of like region-wide behavioral and substance use uh abuse and disorder decisions.
Yeah, they um so funding both goes to the regional um council and then also individually to the counties. This is that regional part of funding and how that gets allocated. Uh the requirement is um for your representative and proxy, at least one of them has to be an elected official. So uh DA is Heidi McCollum as an elected official is a proxy. Um with Kelsey Maxi who kind of heads up our hemorrhage reduction efforts, et cetera, I also go to these meetings too. Um historically, Lake County has not been uh very present in them and that has just started to shift in the last year and. Kelsey's um been made some really great partnerships to bring in more services into the county, so. Our recommendation would continue to have her and then DA McCollum there from like the criminal justice perspective.
I hope that that pot of money might grow, in case y'all hadn't heard, that uh I think it was just this week that they finally came to a settlement with the Saffron family, you Purdue Pharma. It's one of the main your major manufacturers of liquids and stuff for over seven billion dollars. So that's so it's some of that money will flow down from there.
One time, one time settlement.
Yeah, one time.
To manage an ongoing multi-generational epidemic.
Yeah.
Super messed up.
Uh Leadville Urban Renewal Authority, so currently Adam Ducharme, Tourism and Economic Development Director uh is our representative. He was also just recently elected the President of that authority, um my recommendation would be to keep Adam there. And if you would like to join Lura meetings and understand. Get better, um I I welcome you to do that, but we, I know we touched on it a little bit earlier this week, it is a very complex. Um. Authority, um it is something that we uh the community did set up, um but I think with Adam. Being there and especially Adam now being the President, we'll actually start to understand it much better and also actually start to see results. Aside from uh housing and the rail yard.
So just a quick clarification, all of these things will will we get invites to so we know when they're happening and then so we can put them on our calendars?
Correct.
And so you all know when two of us are going to something, even if we're not. Great, just wanna make sure that that's.
Yeah.
Lauren never chatted like so, wouldn't you know?
Yeah. Uh but we'll we'll coordinate all of these invites, make sure that you all three have them.
Great.
Part of the weekly planner, right, it's on there, commissioners may attend.
Mm-hmm.
Um those kind of things, so they'll all be on there.
Thank you.
Then of course we want the public to attend as well.
Yeah, excellent, thanks.
Lake County Water Projects Enterprise, um so this was recently um stood up, uh I'll let Bryce explain. Um what the society's rule is.
Basically, yeah, the the county owns the water and so you as the board have final authority on how that water is used. And so the Water Projects Enterprise kind of works under the framework of the water. Um marketing policy we have, which kind of defines what water we can allocate to where. And so those applications will be heard by the board and you know finally approved by them, so. There's gonna be a lot of, you know, I'll present on the engineering study and everything like that, but there are gonna be some applications which will rely on your discretion. You know, bigger uses of water, commercial and industrial projects.
Okay. Now, those are the annual appointments that we have for you.
That, we're at the end of the list there.
Is everybody okay, do you wanna read Andy or Andrew, Matt or Matthew?
Matthew would be better for formal, yeah, signature, conversationally whatever works easiest for you, but I guess anything with a signature.
Sure, go for logo, put you one on there.
Put it on, I I would.
Full name?
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, it's a signature.
And then. So we will uh. So we will, we will explain the reading the title versus reading the entire thing.
Yeah, that you, that in um moving to adopt this resolution, you can just move to adopt the resolution. Number twenty-five, twenty-five oh one, and then by its title twenty twenty-five, you don't have to read.
The whole thing.
Resolution into the record.
Fabulous, thank you.
All right, um or move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five oh one?
Um I move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five oh one, the twenty twenty-five County Board End Position Appointments.
I'll second.
All right, call to a vote.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right.
Congratulations.
Passes unanimously?
Um resolution one, it's down.
All right, moving on.
Yep.
All right. Item number five, on the agenda is a discussion and consideration of the adoption of resolution twenty twenty-five oh two. A resolution appointing arbitrators for appeals from decisions of the Board of Equalization. Led by County Manager Tim Bergman, Tim, please introduce yourself and proceed with your comments.
Thank you, Commissioner, my name is Tim Bergman, I serve as the County Manager. Um so, appointing arbiters, um so as we touched on a little bit, um in the the previous um. Agenda item, but so the County Board of Equalization um needs to appoint um. Arbiters should a property owner disagree with your decision. Um as they come through it, so. This touches on legal compliance, appointment of qualified arbiters, so that kind of has a clear process for property owners. Um provides efficient dispute resolution, ensures impartiality.
Partiality?
In fairness and adds to public trust and accountability. Um but so we have uh three arbiters that we recommend. There we are, um. So these are uh folks we've previously had uh as arbiters for the county. Or.
They're actually some new because the ones previously appointed, they weren't available, they didn't respond to our invitation to express interest in continuing. So these are actually recommendations from um our assessor and other resources that other counties are using for this and. We vetted their credentials and such, and they have substantive experience to be able to serve in this role, so we recommend this panel.
Awesome.
Okay, um. Is there any further comments? From the commissioners?
Yeah, for me.
Okay, uh let's uh. Is there a motion on the table for agenda item five?
I move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five zero two, a resolution appointing arbiters arbitrators. For appeals from decisions of the County Board of Equalization.
I'll second the motion.
All right, and nothing further to discuss, if not, then I call a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. The motion passes with the unanimous vote of the board. All right, moving on?
Yes.
All right. Item number six on the agenda is this, the discussion and consideration of the adoption of resolution twenty twenty-five oh three. A resolution setting the regular meetings for the Board of County Commissioners and Public Postings. Led by County Manager Tim Bergman, Tim, again, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, my name is Tim Bergman, I serve as the County Manager. Um so this resolution um is the regular meetings and public postings resolution. Um it's kind of outlined in the staff memo, so this provides legal compliance with Colorado sunshine laws. Um it is trans- adds transparency and accountability to the board, to the public, so they know when you're going to regularly meet, where the meetings are held. Uh how to figure that out. Provides consistency in governance uh for myself and staff, knowing that we need to be prepared for board meetings and getting everything ready for the board to decide on. Um it allows the public to know when there's public access and participation. And of course adheres to the budget and planning process, um Liz has built out an annual calendar for us, we just really need to know the days. Uh that decisions will be made, so we can work on that. It provides a public record and an audit trail, so when our auditors look for meeting minutes and things like that on uh budget decisions. They start with this uh resolution and then it also allows for flexibility, the board, you know, at any time with twenty-four hour notice can call a special meeting. But this resolution doesn't bind you to being like this is our schedule for the year, um so.
What an information.
What?
How, why does it have to be called a special meeting, is that a statutory name?
Yeah, cause you have to specify what your regular meetings will be and that's what this resolution does, but then as Tim's gonna, you're not constrained to only meet. At your regular meetings, if something comes up, you can call for special meetings as well.
I get what it is, I'm wondering if by statute that has to be called a special meeting.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So what we. So what we have done um is that, you know, the former board had their regular meetings on the first and third Tuesday of each month, they started at eleven AM. Um and then we had our work sessions on the second and fourth Tuesdays of every month. And we provided you um with various uh examples from other counties and other boards of county commissioners and what they do. A lot of them, again, why Tuesday, I don't know, but uh that's where a lot of counties landed. Um most of them are uh all day long meetings um booked out. Statute says you have to meet one business day a month. Um so from there, I'm happy to talk through anything with the Commissioners or, you know, provide any context for anything that you have. Um whereas it is up for you to uh discuss.
As long as we can add more special meetings, you know, when community engagement uh focused things to this, I'm okay continuing as it has been at the same times and everything.
Yeah.
At nine as well.
They always start at eleven or sometimes they start at nine?
You choose the time.
You choose the time, um we've been starting the work sessions uh this week at nine and then, you know, for next week as well. Um but for the regular meetings, the decision-making meetings uh start at eleven.
Yeah.
But uh up to you guys.
Mm-hmm.
Did you wanna add something, Chris?
Well, no, I was just gonna say in terms of just the whatever works, what would be better for for your schedules and such. Um and also in terms of availability to consistence and stuff to attend if you consider that. The, you know, obviously starting at eleven kinda runs across most, the the most common lunch breaks that you could have. As you've seen like today and such, staff does attempt to report on their agenda items and I think that it's
Mm-hmm.
It's completely up to y'all in terms of what works best for y'all.
I like eleven, gives you time in the morning to review everything.
Yeah.
I'd like, I'd soon keep it as it is, it works for me.
Okay.
Yeah.
We got Monday.
Just reiterating, we we can always add more to it, but.
Yeah, I think there's gonna be a lot of special.
Yeah, let's let's keep that going if that works for everyone else, I, as of the election, have built my life around however this is operating, so I've got no special extenuating circumstances that are gonna get in the way of doing this.
Is there a powder clause in that, can we put a powder section on it?
Ah yes, eight inch.
Eight inch?
Yeah, yeah.
Chris, can we work on that?
If you don't show up, we don't have a court.
We'll take turns.
Um.
Can I ask a, sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, sorry, Chair, may I?
Ye- uh yes, uh the it's uh here from Deputy County Manager Lauren Snyder.
Thank you. Um, Lauren Snyder, Deputy County Manager. This doesn't have to go in the resolution, but it might be helpful for us as we start building out your work sessions in February.
Mm-hmm.
Cause a lot of folks would wanna go before you, but we've been holding off cause we don't know what you wanna do for work sessions. We have been doing the every other, the so the second and fourth Tuesday at either nine AM or one PM, there are work sessions. Do you wanna keep that as well?
First typical two.
Two?
Yeah. Yeah, two that Tuesday.
Do we call them a special work session when they're
Off of them.
Cause just a, work sessions can land whenever.
Yes.
Work sessions are decisions, they're just discussions. Yeah, they, yeah.
Yeah.
But they still have to be be scheduled at least twenty twenty four, no, they don't have to necessarily, but you still have to, you know, stay at least twenty four hours in advance.
Regularly, scheduled. Okay. Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Do there need to be more for now, is there that many people that wanna come before us?
Uh-huh.
I would say.
The two, the two twice a week or twice a month has been working out pretty well.
Will you make?
Well, it's basically ends up being okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd wanna do Mondays.
Okay. True.
Mondays, fall holidays, holidays a lot too, so I think, I was gonna say, I think the Tuesday, that
Um. No.
Yeah, no.
Uh for us. School district.
Yeah, it's probably. The Tuesday thing is the thing, but.
Sure.
Have have you think in the past, there's been any issue retaining information presented at work meetings that pertain to decisions made at regular meetings over a week gap, you know?
I, it depend, it depends, it depends on the subject, right? How complex contentious uh it is, but um you know, we always through, you know, throughout the end of the end of every work session, we'll get into that next week, um but and then at the end of every regular meeting, we're going over the next week's calendar and the agenda items. So there's opportunities to ask questions, to provide um feedback to the Commissioners or answers to the Commissioners. Um uh but I will, uh Liz is our resident education expert, is a week too long.
If we need refreshers, we could just ask questions.
Yeah, and so I would say like the typical cadence, you're maybe you're probably gonna have, if it's a big item or contentious, about a month between the work session and the regular and that's gonna give you all the time you need for questions, more information, so that when it does get to that decision moment, paired with that, you're always gonna have that memo in there, so there's that tool to refresh.
Cool.
Um whatever notes you take during the work sessions.
Well, and this is just This is just logistical, you're asking us so that staff can know when they can schedule what our standing times are that we're putting aside.
Yeah.
But for instance, this week, we had like six work sessions, we can have all sorts of work sessions. You're just asking us to establish one of the regular ones that you all can rely on for scheduling, is that correct?
Correct, and we will know that the second and fourth Tuesday, we can put things on your schedule
Great.
between nine and five PM.
It works for me, yeah, that's worked for the team previously when I would move forward in what, you know, the
Awesome.
experience of the team has stated works best.
Well, and I, I mean, my request, you guys would be like in this, in February, how do we balance, I don't, if there are like twelve people, so we can really dig into things, I don't wanna be waiting two weeks between work sessions. So like, how do we balance you all understanding our schedule, us balancing our schedule and you being able to manage everybody else getting on to our schedule?
That's a great question, um and that comes to part of the the agenda and the calendar review.
Okay, so we can discuss.
Right. Yes, you guys can discuss and be like, all right, we're gonna hear from uh DNR uh or CPW on wolves and oriole toads next week. Um and you guys are like, ah, we gotta, we need, really need to focus on this.
We got other things, yeah.
We can save the toads.
Yes.
Okay.
They're like, heck yeah.
Yeah, yes.
But and and work sessions aren't set in stone, these are the regular meetings, set in stone, work sessions, we're gonna have some
Right. Correct.
ability to move things around at your guys'.
And you can always take it to a second work session if it needs further discussion as well.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Feel like, you know, you haven't touched all the areas or whatever, then.
Cool, okay.
At the end of this meeting, we're gonna talk about what do you want work sessions on. So I, we can schedule those people who wanna come talk to you for thirty minutes here or there, but then at the end of this meeting, we'll say, okay, in February, what do you wanna schedule, okay, do we need to do a Tuesday and Thursday work session, and then we can go from there.
Mm-hmm.
It just helps us know when to put things on your schedule.
Okay.
The other uh part of this uh resolution, so um we need to provide all legal notices and advertisements to the newspaper of general circulation, which is the Herald, Legal Herald Democrat. And um, resident of Houseville nineteen ten eighty seven shall publish notice of public meetings on the county's website, which is lakecountyco.gov.
I wish there was a way to find out how many people with a paper in their hand read those.
Well, here's the, unfortunately, it's by code.
You'll start reading the legal notices now.
Yeah, but by code, it has the, you know, you have to designate a a print um resource for those publications.
Yeah. Yeah.
You can't just do do online, because that's been a robust thing too, to say, well, it'd be much quicker and easier if you just print online, but for that, and there's some other notices that have to be, that the statute actually says has to be printed.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why you designate the Herald as your official print.
Yeah.
Mm.
Do we have to pay the Herald for the space in the paper, right?
So much.
Lots of money.
Cause, yeah, I'll bet, I'll bet.
Yes.
Yeah, I know it's legally mandated, it's just, it's a, I wonder who reads it, cause I know there's probably like valuable info in there for certain.
You, you will, you guys will start reading them now.
I read it.
Yes, true.
Yeah.
I love the public notices.
Yeah. Um. Shall we?
You got it?
Motion.
All right, is that, we through with that?
Yes.
Okay, um is there a motion on the table for agenda item six?
You wanna do it?
Sure. I will make a motion to approve resolu- or adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash three setting regular meetings for the Board of County Commissioners and public postings.
Can I second?
I'll second.
Okay. All right, if there's no further discussion on the motion, then I will call back to a vote.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion passes with the unanimous vote. Moving on? All right. Item number seven on the agenda is the discussion and consideration of the adoption of resolution twenty twenty five dash oh four. A resolution setting official office hours for the Lake County Courthouse Administration Offices for the transaction of county business. This will be led by County Manager Tim Bergman, Tim, please introduce yourself and proceed with your comments.
Thank you, Commissioner, my name is Tim Bergman, I serve as Lake County Manager. So resolution twenty twenty five oh four um follows uh statute that allows the Board of County Commissioners to designate the days and hours during which all county offices shall be kept open for the transaction of county business. Current operating hours for all county uh de- departments, uh not offices, um is Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM. So libraries open at lunch, human services open at lunch, public health is. Um the sheriff, the treasurer and the assessor also keep their administrative offices open during lunch.
I get it.
Um the clerk and recorder does not.
Mm-hmm.
Um so as so as part of this, um you know, it is being open and accessible and yes, the Board of County Commissioners does have the authority for those administrative functions um to be open uh as deemed uh necessary by the board. And this is also a time um for uh the Commissioners, you know, to discuss, I I talked about it with Commissioner Bullock, but as we look around the state, there are various municipalities and various counties that operate on a four-ten schedule. It's not particularly a cost savings to the county, um uh still paying the same amount for personnel. Um but it is, you know, a nice retention tool or attraction tool for folks looking at county jobs. Even beyond that, it could be open more to the public, so seven thirty to five thirty. Um so you're open those hours when folks are either going to work, coming home from work, that kind of stuff. So just something to consider, you don't have to make that change now, um um but uh just something to consider. Chaffey County uh did that in twenty twenty two. I was like, oh my, how many pitch works came out, and actually not. Um you know, I know you all know our school district is on a four-day school week, be a benefit for parents here.
Yeah.
Um so just something for you guys to think about, um but there is also that option of what you all think the operating hours would be. If we go beyond the forty hours is when we need to pay overtime and all that kind of stuff, so just.
Or or just the public works each afternoon?
Yeah.
In the summer, yeah.
So one point to the statute that's referenced here, it has a specific provision that yes, I'll be telling you that, but it also provides that all clerks of court and sheriffs shall be subject at all times to command of the people and each day shall let all hours night and day be prepared to attend to such duties as may reasonably be required of them.
Mm-hmm.
So that is expressly, the sheriff and the clerk of court are expressly carved out in terms of general, from general government operations for that they need to be available to
Call the people.
Call the people to perform their duties is necessary.
It has been brought to my attention that this is an issue in Lake County. Um so is this a situation where we would move this or amend this to include any language that would address that, or do we deal with that separately at a later date?
Unfortunately, I I I think your general determination as to the office hours of the county is what you're authorized to do under the statute. I don't know that you can specifically direct the other elected officials to comply with those office hours, although statutorily they are not only expected to, but they are also expected to do more than those hours if necessary to perform their duties.
What would be an example of the clerk and recorder having to do something beyond office hours?
Well, the ones, it, the one, the, yeah, it's the clerk of court, so it's not the, the, yes, it's not the clerk and recorder's office.
It's like the sheriff. Clerk of court. Oh, oh, oh. Got it. Got it.
But one of the issues we run into where different offices and departments have different hours like that,
Hmm.
especially like at lunchtime, when all the other offices are available and if somebody comes in, for example, they have a question with the treasurer, that then sends them to the assessor, that then sends them to the clerk of court's office, and it happens to make two trips for that, if there are multiple offices that they need to consult with.
I'd be really curious if there's support amongst the hundred and sixty employees? Would that include parks and rec and programming and stuff like that, or? I'd be really curious, if there, if most employees are for it, cause it doesn't really affect us, would probably gonna either work or not.
We're talking about four-ten's?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the other operator.
I know, I mean, personally, I think it's a great idea.
To be able to available outside of typical office hours so that people, so that the public can make it back to access these departments.
Yeah, it would be seven thirty to six, is that correct?
It's seven thirty to five thirty?
What is?
Uh what what a four-ten will say.
Seven thirty to five thirty or eight to six.
Eight, eight to six, cause you you're in touch with a thirty minute um break that you're paid for, if you take more than thirty minutes,
Oh.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
you're not supposed to be paid for an hour.
I think it would be in our hopes that any changes made would better serve the community as far as accessibility to our services. However, it feels like our hands are tied with regards of getting other elected officials to actually adhere to these business hours.
Um so one thing you could do.
Can we, can we pause for a second, this seems super passive, and like we've got Cindy right here who works in the clerk and recorder's office. Cindy, do you know why the clerk and recorder's office is not available during lunch?
It was because we were really shorthanded.
Okay.
And um I think now we're almost to get everybody trained where we should be, so.
Nice. So do you?
But it was because we were really short handed.
To manage, yeah, yeah.
Right, and even like when we have, I mean, we have full, a full crew, but they're still in training, so it's not like we can just, you know, like leave half of us for lunch and leave the other half here
Mm.
because they weren't fully trained to do everything in the office that had to get done.
Is that some, it seemed like, yesterday or a couple of days ago when I came in, that you all are really close to all being pretty cross-trained, so that you could start being open for lunch?
Yeah. Yeah, I guess, I mean, I don't have a problem with it.
Awesome.
So.
I mean, I think that as a citizen, I could only have come in during lunch, and that's like our whole job is to be available for folks. Anyway, I was just wondering if you could.
Yeah, that was the main reason, that was the main reason.
Okay, cool.
Cindy, would you feel comfortable expressing your personal opinion on four-ten's or maybe checking informally in the office?
We've, we've all wanted four-ten's, and we brought it to the Commissioners and it was shut down last year.
What was that? Oh. We got new Commissioners now.
Just like.
Maybe there's a chance.
You have to be working locally to be able to make it back before, like you have to take time off of work to be able to get to these offices.
Well, anybody with kids in the school system, the kids are out on Fridays.
Right, yeah, we we tried it, it didn't work, so.
You tried to?
To do the four-ten's.
To do the four-ten.
To ask for the four-ten's, not like you tried four-ten's and it failed?
No, no.
Okay.
No, we didn't, we didn't actually do it, it came to the Commissioners, it didn't work.
Well, I'd be willing to entertain it, it's, and I guess we'd need more input from all the departments, are they, and you said the the Roden Bridge does four-ten's in the summer?
In the summer they do, just at like daylight hours, so they're on the, they're on a four-ten schedule, um
Oh, I see.
Yeah, and of course, you know, uh programming, plowing, those kind of things would, you know, the
Yeah.
the on-call things would happen, but I'm sure with even, you know, the pros department and staggering, but maybe it's not the Friday out for everyone, right? But there's no way to stagger um having that scheduled, so
Right, right.
it, I'd be more than happy to work with Zoe on a staff survey and um feedback from directors on like, stop it, or like, yes.
Yeah.
Um.
And then the other elected officials, she could request a work session with them to discuss if there would be, if there would be issues there were.
Uh huh.
Obviously, the Sheriff's Office is reinforced, and they, they have their, their scheduling to accommodate that.
Right.
Right.
Is there a upstairs on four-ten's, I think?
The.
Court?
Court, no, because um they do have court supplies, yeah, so they, that's the other thing too in terms of whether the courts,
Right, she's here. Correct.
you know, the court, the building might have to end up being open for the courts' operations upstairs too.
Uh huh.
Well, I'm saying we wouldn't be able to like separate off the Sheriff's Department for constant access from the public during like regular hours
Yes.
until we've got the renovation done.
Now, the, the one thing in terms of public access to the courts, you do have that, that breezeway there, so it could be maintained by the court bailiffs, the security, to be able to have that open on Fridays, if that's the date on the side of the.
Right.
And they could be posted downstairs too to be able to manage the sheriffs.
Stairs. Yes.
I love this, Matt. What do you think about um getting, this seems like it would serve the public better than what we're doing, but what about reaching out to the public? Like, this wasn't a topic. Is this something you talked about during the campaign and got feedback on already? Just, I didn't hear it.
You know, Tim and I had a discussion. I'd be curious what you guys as full-time employees, personally, if.
My, my deputy's already on a four-ten because she commutes up from dinner. So that just, that's a better use of her time in terms of being able to, to be more focused and less time spent on the road on that.
Yeah.
Okay, as long as no one's going over forty hours, could it be optional by department? Like, since we're in the interest of serving the public, frontline.
That would be the challenge, so that was, that was part of, um, the clerk and recorder came last year, it was just only for her office. And we tried with the other elected officials, so I think we did some progress, but you know, considering right, like, the library and the days open that Brenna has the library open, can she work with her staff and shift that so it's still open and everybody is on that four-ten schedule?
Or the landfill, or, you know, there's a lot of moving pieces here that we gotta take into consideration with a
Same, yeah. Yeah.
a big broad brush stroke like this.
Yes.
Well, the library already has extended hours, like they're open on Saturdays.
True. Yes, yep.
And landfill isn't open Monday through Friday, so.
Monday and Tuesdays and Wednesdays, they're closed, so the public, like, commercial dumpers could go.
Right. So what kind of discretion do we have then to like, like Andy's saying, to change which departments we're talking about? Or is that fully within our purview? We don't have to do a blanket statement?
You don't have to do a blanket statement, but if I, if you give me some time to work with department directors on like, what does that look like?
Yeah.
Um, do you have the staffing to continue weekend programming, right?
Yeah.
And and shift that throughout the week? Maybe somebody has a Tuesday off and they're okay with that, right? And they work on Saturday.
Yeah.
Um, but I think we can work through that. I mean, I think for Human Services and Public Health, um.
To be honest, so uh I get nervous about four-ten's just when we also allow work from home. DHS allowed both, and I had some real uh doubts on people actually working four-ten's when they're working from home also.
Hmm.
Um, and then it just adds it a little bit more manager oversight of like, when did you lock in? Are you doing work?
Uh huh.
Or are you just working, you know, your eight hours, four days a week?
Hmm.
Um, so I think there's some considerations there. I also agree, just with DHS and Public Health, some of the feedback we've gotten is uh, some, some folks actually do a lot of their work on Fridays because their kids are off and they have, you know,
Uh huh.
they do some of their errands, and so that being a busier day. So I'd like, as part of this, to be like, can we stagger and or how busy are you on Fridays if we were to be closed?
Uh huh. Yeah.
So, but I definitely think from a retention standpoint, a lot of staff asks for four-ten's and that type of flexibility is just making sure that productivity doesn't go down when we also allow them to work from home.
Yeah, Cindy. I see that. So when we were talking about it in our office, for like two weeks, we asked everybody that walked in. And I think there was only a handful of people that said, that's not gonna work. But everybody else was for it. They're like, that would really work. But there was only a handful that said no. And we did this for like two weeks.
Okay, thanks, because that was my next question. How can we best engage with the public to find out what the public's.
The community input on this, yeah, it's gonna be crucial.
Yeah, that's a one crucial component, but this is a really complex, multifaceted subject, decision, et cetera. Um, I'm like the idea, I love the idea, but I slow deliberate discussions about this.
And who would it affect?
Yeah.
Like, who would it affect? We get who it would affect positively, but like, who would it affect negatively and then make sure we're not, yeah.
That's my worry about.
Are Harold Democrat surveys affected? Do people respond? I know I've seen in the past, I've never responded.
I think with Liz's um internet magic skills, um, we can create, we can create a, we can create our own survey
Yeah.
on that, asking questions, um, and getting feedback. We can use the website, with social media, we can.
We can use, obviously, communications.
Yeah, we could march each department to one of their folks coming in and talk to them about it.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Might go some ways to mending the fences between your department and the rest of us.
The community too.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I think it would also be important for me that we are asking our, when it comes to equity, to make sure that we're actually not just depending on in-house equity, uh, and understanding, but like working with community partners to make sure we're actually getting a clear understanding of who we're affecting.
Yeah.
Yeah, great. So for now, should we just adopt what we have been doing and know that this is something we wanna keep working on?
Or do we table it?
Um, I would, I would suggest um, previous of doing, yeah, doing what we're, we're doing, and if you want that language there, you you see the one highlighted, we have for regular business hours, I mean, we can spell it out from eight to five PM, open over the lunch hour.
Yeah, we just like the current resolution says.
Okay. Alright, well, um, does anyone have any more discussion they wanna bring about this?
Not from me.
Alright, so is there a motion on the table um for Agenda Item Seven?
Do you wanna do it? I've done a lot.
I will uh move to make a motion to approve uh Resolution twenty twenty-five dash four, a resolution setting office hours for the Lake County Courthouse administration offices for the transaction of business to include lunch hour being open at lunch.
Oh, excuse me, a second, that.
You're really good at all the rest.
Thank you so much.
Um, alright, no further discussion, uh, call to a vote.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Alright. Uh, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh four passes with unanimous vote. Moving on, alright. Item number eight on the agenda is the discussion and consideration of the adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh five. A resolution establishing bank signature authorization for the County Manager, led by County Manager Tim Bergman. Tim, all you.
It's just, shouldn't be, yeah, it's just gen- it's the general resolution establishing bank signature authorization.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just the general one. It maybe that was a
Yeah.
an old version of the, of the agenda.
I remember, okay.
So on, we don't actually have the bank account. But I can, I'll talk through this, so um, the.
Yes, this is the, the right, that's not the right version of that, because it did have the list of the different folks that are approved for bank signature authorization, sorry.
Okay, um.
Same, you know.
I can.
If you find it.
Yes, I can uh talk through it, right, so um, as the Board of County Commissioners, right, you uh set the budget and have that fiduciary responsibility, um, so we do need to get your names on the uh bank account, the county's bank account. County's bank account is managed by this fine gentleman, um, however, he cannot sign checks.
Actually, I can't sign checks.
Oh, can you?
Yes.
Oh.
I, I can't sign the checks that, the pay, the um, AB checks or payroll checks.
Okay. Oh, because you do it to the other entities.
Right, yeah.
Okay, um, sorry, um, but currently, um, on the bank account, Patrick, his deputy Deidra, clerk and recorder, Cindy, myself.
I never got finalized because I were waiting for you.
No, I did, I did it the other day.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, I talked with them, I did it, um, and then the Board of County Commissioners. Um, so anyway, with that, the folks had lots of questions of why I would have signature authority. Um, so since I was given the authority by the prior board, I have signed um checks during the past two weeks during the transition. So I signed payroll checks and account payable checks over the past two weeks, because there was no one else who could sign them. Um, so moving forward, what we're going to do is having set times on Thursdays for accounts payable and our payroll coordinator to come to the Chair's office to sign checks. If the Chair is not available, goes to Vice Chair, neither of you are available, goes to Elsa. Three of you are not available is where it fell to me, um.
Okay.
But um.
I've got the, the one, the rabbit that was supposed to be in there.
Okay.
Alright, so you work forward to that information that the bank needs, so we need to fill that out. And watch your guys in the group. This resolution.
Do you have a printer? It looks like a.
Oh.
Can you print it out?
Sure.
Cause it looked, it looked like a photocopy.
Oh, did it? Oh, it was, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Would that be better, or should I just?
Yeah. I'll get you, yes.
Thank you, Patrick.
So there's the options, I mean digitally or a hard copy?
No, oh, I'm happy, piece of the bank needed.
Okay.
No, no, it just needs to go it out and give it back to me.
Okay, cool, yeah. Whatever you're doing for him, do for me too.
Okay.
Thank you. Please.
Elsa, do you need a document as well?
I'm just trying to remember things.
She knows how to work a computer.
No, actually, that's what I wanted to add. Liz, I have no idea how to set my computer up to a printer or which printer or any of that.
Yeah, I was gonna see which printer you wanted. I recommended the one in the Treasurer's office. It does great work.
Okay.
Oh, my lord, Patrick.
You don't know about the paper wars.
You almost lost your eyeball.
There's a printer in my office. Does that work?
Oh, if there, yeah, we can hook you up to anything, um, well, take a look at the different pieces of technology. We'll talk about your purposes and we'll get you all set up.
Well, Patrick, please expand, I sound, what's going on with the paper wars? The great paper wars of twenty twenty-five.
Oh, Patrick doesn't share his paper. It's very important to him.
Oh.
Well, apparently, apparently the county was paying for paper, and then at one point, somebody who will remain or doesn't torture anymore, um, said that each department had to do their own paper. And because everyone uses my printer, I didn't think that was very big.
Okay, you schedule reams of paper to feed the, okay.
Reams, yes.
And Patrick, will you keep your most treasured?
I'm not gonna tell them.
Okay, it's in the vault.
You know what, we're gonna put a printer in one of the Commissioners' offices and a stack of reams of paper, this tall, and everyone will be welcome to dip into that, everyone within the staff.
Except Patrick.
Except you.
Yeah, if we can get the one in my office going or put it in your office.
You can put anything in my office.
The one in my office works probably the best for you guys, because you can scan stuff.
Okay.
To your computer.
Well, that works for me.
I don't know anymore.
Yeah.
Yes, you can.
Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't.
I mean, I don't see us printing out a whole lot of stuff.
You'd be surprised.
Okay.
Um, what, what?
Yeah, I was gonna say, for some reason, I, I emailed the, the general check signing resolution over and it's not coming through to the VAS to write things. Since the resolution, and since prior resolution last year already approved Tim to sign checks, this is just the one adding y'all two check, right, because y'all need that for the bank in order to be added to your.
Okay, I mean, just the, the chain there.
Yes.
Sorry. Um, they changed it, so it used to be Treasurer.
Sorry, Matt.
I'll put an IP address and a whole bunch of fun stuff. We're gonna give away.
Oh, you don't want me to do that, does it?
Well, you, you can't.
I can try, oh.
Well, no, no, you literally can't.
Niche.
You don't have admin credentials. Sorry.
It might be that, it might be the three countries.
Okay, okay. Cool, well, apparently this is stupid anyway, so.
No, it's not stupid. We just, we connected with the IP address, which is like a little bit stronger than picking the machine.
Tighter, yeah.
Um, and I haven't memorized Patty's IP yet. It's ten one oh one dot.
Hmm, okay, cool.
I think that, that was two choices, but I think that was.
Okay. Thank you.
Matt, do you wanna make a motion? Nikki?
Okay, so here it is.
We're ready, yeah, here you go.
It's just, there it is, that, that, those are the folks that are authorized to sign checks on behalf of the county.
Okay.
Great.
And this is the, the same, it's done last year with the, just the changes with the Commissioners, otherwise the rest of the people were already authorized to sign.
Oh.
Alright.
Alright, is there any further discussion on this? I'd like to discuss it a little bit further.
Yes, Commissioner Bullock.
Tim, this is one of the contentions from the public that a lot of people didn't think you should have signing authority, so as long as it's clear that has to, it has to go through all three of us and we're not available. And, and is there any checks and balances for you signing checks? And what are the checks and balances?
Um. So the other, the authorizing resolution of this says that anytime I do sign a check at the next regular meeting of the Board, I tell you what I signed. Um, so last week I signed payroll checks, um, so staff can be paid. Um, there's that, but yes, the, the practice that we will get into is that every Thursday, either later morning or early afternoon, you're all three gonna have an invite on your calendar. Uh, Nikki and Sarah will know to go to the Chair's office to get that signature. If you're not there, go to the Vice Chair's office. If you're not there, maybe go to Elsa's office. Three of you aren't there, payroll's the next day, right? I'll try and find you guys, be like, hey, it's outer day, but checks need to be signed. Um, so there's that part two, right? If uh you're not around, the staff lets me know that, then I will do what I can to find you guys. And if you're like, I'm coming up from Denver, I'll be there at seven PM, it's like, okay, well, it's late. Um, for that, so there's that dialogue as well that happens. So staff know, staff, don't ever come to me um about, about those unless, you know, all three of you were gone last week.
And the Department.
And this is to, and this is to make, get people to get paid.
Yes.
Yeah.
Just to have people get paid.
Yeah.
And vendors to get paid.
Yeah, right.
And it usually isn't an issue unless all three of you are gone.
Right.
Would it, Matt, would it help to have that in the resolution in section one where it said, where it has us in order current, well, if Andrew was moved to the top because he's chair right now, but we could say like, it has to be in this order of priority?
I think that's, is that what it says?
Well, and that's what I was gonna say, if you wanna see the, the original resolution from last year authorizing him to sign, just see its expressed language.
Oh, it says that, yeah, okay, yeah.
It's al- it's already got exactly what was just described in terms of the steps that have to be taken in order for him to sign checks.
Yeah, right.
Hmm.
So if you want, I can put that into the, the team's um folder to put it up.
Why, why is it, if all these people are allowed to, why is Tim after us? Patrick?
Um, so it really should be a Commissioner and a person from the.
Um, so it really should be a Commissioner and a person from the Clerk's office.
Should we two? Uh, we do two signatures or something?
Two, yeah, one from the Treasurer, Clerk and Recorder, and the O C C.
Great, okay.
So that's a checks and balance there.
Yeah.
Yeah. And afterward we learned from the Finance Department's presentation, it sounds like there's a lot more checks and balances going on than the public might be aware of and all those.
Yeah, there's perceived problems and then there's like actual checks and balances to them.
Yeah.
But the clerk and recorder also co-signs with Tim on those checks.
Yes, it wouldn't be just one signature. It has to have two signatures.
I'm comfortable with it. Now that we've discussed it, I've changed my mind.
Cool.
And just for the public's knowledge, like AP isn't going to start cutting checks for vendors unless there's a contract in place that has been approved by the V O C C that there's like, so there's, we don't just write checks to people.
To get the check signed, for Tim to potentially embezzle, has to go through all of the steps and policies of the bank.
Yeah, I don't like that phrase. That's not a good button.
I, I agree, but I think what Matt's saying is that like this is a concern. And I'm trying not to be passive about it. I'm trying to be really direct and say, hey, we've heard that people are worried about this. So I just wanna say what we're talking about.
Right, yeah.
But I agree, that's, it's a, we shouldn't use that if it's not possible and not happening.
And we, we need to be able to go to people when they come to us and say, we shouldn't.
This is the procedure.
This is the procedure so that we understand it as well. And say, hey man, we, we thought about it, we talked about it and we think for the efficiency and the, and all the checks and balances, we're comfortable with it and it's, you know, it's our decision.
So here's the original resolution from last year, last June, that sets forth the standards under which Tim can sign checks. And so it's exactly as what he described, is only when a Commissioner's not readily available. And that it will come to the next meetings, consent agenda for ratification. And it doesn't modify the standard procedure for payment of approvals, that expenditures when a Commissioner is readily available to sign.
And this will be the same procedure we're following this year, just same thing with dates rolled forward?
Yep.
It's, yeah, yeah, it's the same, same type of resolution, just that y'all have to be added to the check signing authorization for the bank.
Okay, uh, at some point in the future date, in the interest of public trust, if we could, you know, get a easily digestible explanation of this, kinda like I've asked about some other things. Just a, a sort of talking points that we can relate to the public about, you know, cause as we learn more about this, our positions, you know, evolve. And I think that would be the same for most people who have a lot of concerns.
I will just, yes. For the public, it is also my career at stake, so.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, anyway.
Presenting, actually.
Yes, indeed.
I was gonna say, no.
Also Matt, yeah.
Your powder days.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, uh, no further discussion on this? Okay, is there a motion on the table for Agenda Item Eight?
I will move to approve the Adoption Resolution twenty twenty five dash zero five, the Resolution Establishing Bank Signature Authorization for All Listed Including County Commissioners.
A second.
Okay. Let's put that to vote.
Aye.
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 Alright. That passes, that motion passes on a unanimous vote. Alright, moving on. Okay. Item number nine on the agenda today is the Presentation of the Public Trustee Fourth Quarter Report, led by the esteemed Lake County Treasurer, Patrick Smith.
And Public Trustee.
Patrick.
I am the Treasurer and Public Trustee. And the Public Trustee is the person who is authorized to file all the paperwork when the foreclosure is presented. As well as releasing all deeds of trust. So every quarter, I have to present this report. Recently, I've had to present it. So this tells, I have two bank accounts. One is at Public Bank and Trust. We have an account there that all electronic release of deeds go through. So a lot of mortgage companies and banks release them electronically. They don't have to send in the paperwork. So all the money that gets put in that account is all electronic releases. The first mountain bank is money where I deposit foreclosure monies and other physical release of deeds.
Patrick, what makes you a Public Trustee? Like, how does that come about?
Most counties in Colorado have, are the Public, the Treasurer is the Public Trustee, is a Treasurer and Public Trustee. Except the really big counties, they have their own Public Trustees.
So.
It's state statute.
It's state statute, okay.
When you run for Treasurer, you run for Treasurer and Public Trustee.
Oh, okay. Why is that not on the ballot?
It, it is.
I just remember saying Treasurer. It should say, and Public Trustee. Okay, cool.
These numbers that we're looking at, are these like the fees for processing stuff?
Yes, and the Treasurer, and the Public Trustee's fee is only paid through these fees.
Okay.
So my salary is part of the Treasurer and Public Trustee. The Public Trustee's fees only come from, the Public Trustee's pay only comes from the fees collected.
Okay.
Up to twelve thousand five hundred. So that hasn't happened in, in years. Usually, you can see that I've had maybe six foreclosures this past year. Three in the last quarter. Back in the, before I started in two thousand ten eleven, there were up to a hundred and ten foreclosures.
Wow.
Yeah.
That was a bad time.
Yeah, the most I think I've had is thirty six. And the fees for a foreclosure, I used to get a hundred and fifty for each foreclosure, now it's up to.
What happens if it goes over twelve five? Does that go into like a county? Cool.
And you can see that we've done fifty four releases in the last quarter, three foreclosures. Those foreclosures, none of them have withdrawn. And none of them have gone to sale. And no cures. This next quarter, I should hopefully have two cures. Which means that the label worked it out at the bank and they paid, they paid it up.
Okay, um, is there any further discussion, Commissioners?
And this is just an acknowledgement by the Board, it's not, you know, the, the.
Okay. Okay, cool, sounds good to me.
So we move to acknowledge or we just like accept what you said and say thank you? Thank you.
Alright, man. We will if you do. See you at, see you at the printer. Making cup. Alrighty, moving on. Item number ten on the agenda is Discussion and Consideration of Week One Work Sessions and Staff Direction for Future Work Sessions as requested by the Board of County Commissioners.
Nice.
Commissioners will be using this time to reflect on our past week and to formally give staff direction on and future work sessions or items we want further public discussion on in February. Let's discuss.
So you're, sorry.
Matt?
This is, uh, we're gonna start brainstorming ideas and stuff? Can I make a motion to adjourn temporarily, have a little break?
The recess, sure.
Yeah.
Totally.
Is that okay with you, Cindy?
Hmm.
If it's okay with everybody else, just, uh, it's too harsh in here.
Seconded, dude, seconded. Aw, thanks, Patrick.
Thank you.
Someone's just starting to breeze one in the morning and have like a corner of an office.
Yeah, twenty minutes sounds good. Spagot one forty five?
Okay.
Or is that too much time? Um, it's twenty three minutes.
We got it two o'clock.
We do have a work session starting at two o'clock, but, um.
Should we back by two, one forty?
Fifteen minute break?
Yeah, yeah. Come here, I'm gonna show you, cause I have one too.
Everyone online, we're gonna take a fifteen minute break.
You guys give the word when you are ready.
Ready.
Okay, uh, make a motion to return from recess?
I'll second.
Aye.
Alright.
Number ten.
Number ten.
X.
Alright, discussion, um, should I re- re- uh, start that? Okay, item number ten, uh, before we left for recess, um. Item number ten on the agenda was discussion and consideration of week one work sessions and staff directions for future work sessions as requested by the Board of Accounting Commissioners. Uh, we'll use this time to reflect on the past week and give formal direction on future work sessions or items that we want further public discussion on in February. Let's discuss our whiteboard items.
I'll do the whiteboard for you. I have the list of things from the past few days.
Okay.
I also have kind of leads to the next agenda item, but yeah, we do have work sessions scheduled for the next two weeks, a week and a few days, and the first week of February of department reports and then community organizations coming, um, city coming to talk about what they do, our interactions with them and things like that, but a time for I will write down, um, priorities and I would maybe suggest three from each of you and then the board prioritizes from those nine, just to start. Um, of course, everything changes as, as the board needs to.
I have a quick question. Uh, CCI asked us to respond to who's our proxy and they have their steering team meeting today, so just a side note, has that been taken care of?
So Lauren, um, has been the proxy, local Lauren and I kind of tag teaming that.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, up to you guys.
We couldn't attend next week anyway, unless we wanted to skip all the training.
Yeah.
Well, I'd be interested in that in the future.
Yeah, me too.
As a voter, as the, I mean, we could all go, we only get one vote, but
Right.
Curious to learn more about that. Anyway, I just wanted to make sure that it's not getting overlooked today.
I've got it up there. CCI and CCAT reps and CAS would be our other one.
So next Thursday, we're gonna go over the legislative process and as part of that go over what CCI, CCAT, CC four AC, all of the like county politicians are introducing.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, we prioritize, um, where, what you want to engage in. So there's time, um, we'll also have our law guest up here meeting with you to give direction. Um, and then are you all thinking of going to each of those steering or each of those committees, right? They have like groups like Health Human Services, Land Use, Development, you wanting to participate in all of them? Or have one of you be kind of lead?
Well, it's two days. They're all back to back to back to back, so it'd be silly for us to like split up the steering committees.
Okay.
But yeah, I guess going one, going one at a time seems perfectly reasonable. I put up there, how are we going to figure out who are represent, how our representative is going to represent the board in those decisions? So maybe, it sounds like this is already a priority in the next week. Maybe we could also make that like decision-making between, for the board so that the representative has direction for how they would be voting at that steering committee.
Yeah, because there's a vote coming up on Friday.
That's right.
Thursday and Friday.
Yeah, we need to decide how we're gonna vote on whatever they want us to vote on.
And
Is there time to decide for that in the work sessions or do we need a regular board meeting?
You can provide guidance, uh, in the work sessions to
Through the proxy?
To the proxy.
Okay.
Um, or you know, to whoever's gonna attend on behalf of that and what we'll do. So during legislative session, we'll have that as regular on, uh, your regular agendas. Um, talking about it, some will be very specific, like a piece of legislation that the county is running this year.
Mm.
Others will be broad of like, hey, CCI talked about this, um, should like join in support of that. Um, same, whatever, giving guidance to that proxy. And then also other legislative items that come up during legislative session. Um, you know, pick any topic and if, if the board, you know, feels that you want to take a position of support, oppose, monitor, uh, amend, so we'll have those, those discussions.
Okay.
Cool, so that's already a priority. I think that would have been, that's clearly on mine too.
Well, we got, so we got that one covered for next week.
Okay.
Um, but thinking, you know, Commissioner also what, what's the three on top of your mind?
Thank you. Um, number one, having a deeper dive into the TED department and how that's evolved. Specifically how we're working like within the community, the other economic development or business advocacy groups. I want to see how the county has kind of like changed its approach to engaging in this topic and where TED falls in it. Um. Get like a point in time, understanding of where we're at. Um. Yeah, I know that we're gonna be hearing from Adam, but I think to me, that larger conversation so it can be not just overview, what is this, but like what are our positions? What is the position of the county? What has the prior board kind of set as priorities? Alright, the other one, uh, which I'm sure will be shared by these two, but is a deeper dive into our recreation. Our pros department in particular and goal. I've already said like it'd be great to understand better from the county how, why, goal is now part of us. And what the current director plans, how the current director plans on leveraging that, that asset we gained. But then also like how, like realistic short-term goals, whatever Duncan's goals are. I'd like to actually dive deeper into how realistic those are, how can we move them forward? What tools does he need? So again, not just overview, but really getting into action.
We had a little foresight on that one because most departments allow like thirty or forty-five minutes, just the initial blush, but with pros involved, be an hour.
Yeah, good.
So we can start, yeah, yeah.
Great. Um, those were my two, those were my two main ones and I know that they're already on our agenda, but when you're asking about these have, it's been really interesting and wonderful to have these similar overviews of each one of the departments. And I'd be more interested in getting into like action items and moving. Yeah, action items, how we can support that, et cetera. And then I mean, yeah, I think all three of us have input, especially with pros and rep land fees. Okay, and then I'm just gonna say, because I've got them up there, but, uh, these are not like work sessions, but talking about the feeling of this room and like this table and this is really awkward to me. All of us sitting next to each other, I would much rather be able to face each other so we can discuss as a board. And this, facing this way, it feels really magisterial. And so I don't, when I've been a constituent coming into this room, it's incredibly intimidating. I'm just wondering if now that we're here, we could kind of like mix up some of this vibe and make it a little more approachable. So I'd love to chat about that sometime. Um, and then the other thing is the our hallway, I would love, you know, we've got all those photos on the walls, all the old photos. I don't want to get rid of those, but if we could like consolidate them in an area. I think it'd be fun to invite like our local art teachers to be able to bring students' art in. Like a reason for people to come into this building that's not just for administrative needs, but a way that we can bring the community in, in a more enlivening way. I'd just like to like beautify or activate that hallway better. So I want to talk about those things, but I don't know if we need to have a work session on it.
Something with like more of a temporary, uh, placement, because I don't want to do anything really, you know, I don't want to have kids paint murals in there if we're gonna tear it all down. But like a rotating
Yeah.
feature, installation artist of the week or something, or like cannonball or
Yeah, installations. Yeah, installations, not not full art. Not painting.
Hall hallway and boardroom beautification.
Yeah.
Next week.
Yeah.
Um.
Anyway, that's short term, very short term priority in the next one.
I like that idea.
Yeah.
Got some sculptures or something, like a revolving
Local artists, sculpture.
Student sculpture.
Yeah.
In the in the breezeway.
That's it.
You also have a huge asset with your public history, your history collection at the library and what they've digitized.
Yeah.
So that is also a really good opportunity to refresh and also really celebrate some of your local history.
Thank you.
Um, would the board be okay with Commissioner also exploring that further, engaging with local kids and art and like starting that?
Yes, a hundred percent.
Thanks.
Yeah. Um, alright, uh, short term. Let's figure out this animal shelter I G A. Um, it's important to the community. I know there's a lot more to it than we can figure out quickly, but I think the sooner we can get that knocked out. It's one less thing on the list. On that note, the motocross track, another point of contention. So this, a lot of this is workload for you, Chris, um, but these are things that, you know, it seems like they've been sticking points for a lot of people locally. Um, my little bit longer term uh is exploring options for budget flexibility in regards to paving and what can we do to enhance um and support those projects. Uh, and really kind of supercharge that cuz again, the public from what I hear um is asking for it. Uh, improvements to our our roads. Um, to me, it's the first step that, you know, is visible that they see that they're like, you know, unless with Mike's direction, there are other projects that he thinks would take priority over getting some, some of the worst roads repaved, but um and lastly, um, a deeper look at the Lake County Intermediate School building, the details, I'm not gonna say the word. But I I think, I think we should, we got to. It's, it's not fair to so many people who are really, you know, pining for this, for us to just act like it doesn't exist. I feel like that really creates a bad precedent. I don't wanna get started this way. I wanna address these things. I know you guys have put so much time and effort into this, but it's my turn to do it too. So, you know, what can I do to you know, foster this conversation in a way that is, you know, accessible to everyone, including the people watching, the people, you know, the public, so let's look at the intermediate school building and really see what the nuts and bolts and sticking points of that are. That's my list.
We're doing like a mini introduction of how we got where we got with L C I S when it was put on the table last summer fall, as well as just like a one animal shelter conversation, so that'll be next Thursday.
Okay, cool.
I would second all of Andy's points and uh maybe at the top of my list would be seeing where we could pull some money back from some departments and start giving Michael some some extra money. As I understand it, the C dot's gonna be in town batching asphalt this summer using our facilities and they're willing to sell us asphalt at cost. And I'm not talking about paving the whole county. I'm talking about all the stuff down by the golf course, all those heavily used roads, uh, you know, Mountain View Drive and stuff. So that'd be number one.
Or do that.
What's that?
Only have a few people, so.
Yeah. So uh
Then my rich solutions to that, even temporary, you know?
Yeah, it's like some summer help or um pull one person out of each department and give them a shovel.
I'll take a turn.
I'll take a turn. Uh, secondly, certainly working on the contracts and trying to get the motocross up and running as soon as possible, not delay. Start establishing a friendly relationship with the people in the city about the I G A. So you don't have to write all those down. Uh, Tim, I'm just gonna reiterate what Andy said. Uh, and then big for me is finally making sure that, you know, I'd like to have a a work session on on Nordic skiing. How we can improve it. Did everybody in here, C M C, Sterling? Michael, you're doing a great job. I notice it's getting, it's getting groomed a lot more than it has in the past.
Um, thanks to the college cuz our group is down right now.
Okay.
We'll be alone in.
Oh, really?
But we do have the parts in the shop now, so.
Okay.
Might have to be done this week, which probably next week should be up Monday again. I gotta call it and help this out as well.
Nice. They're, they're doing great and uh and then even get the Merrill Bell Trail Committee in here on that Nordic skiing work session. Cuz I understand they have quite a bit of money in the bank that's just sitting there and nice to have uh maybe the Nordic Ski Council in here, dare I say?
If they're done, it's fine.
Okay.
See, that's a thing. Sounds very efficient.
Can I just clarify, is this for next week or these are, we're talking about like
Near future priorities, just step in short term.
I thought we were talking about that at the strategy at the board retreat. I'm sorry, I misunderstood what we were talking about. My bad.
These, I mean, so all of these, everything that we discussed will inform the board retreat in February.
Yeah.
Uh, what we're thinking about as well as for your work sessions in February and March.
Oh, in March, okay, got it.
Where is, where is the board's priority?
Yeah.
Priorities, um, so we can start scheduling those, getting partners, you know, working with partners on those schedules, that kind of stuff.
Mm-hmm.
So that's where we're, uh, that's, that's where we're at.
Awesome.
Every treat is more like one year, two year, three year.
Right. Okay. And then I, can I add some? Sorry, Matt, are you done?
I'm all done, sir.
Okay. Um, then oh man. I just had one. Oh, we actually really need to dig into our, our Public Health Department and our Public Human Services and how we're gonna actually manage this billion dollar shortfall. Um, where it's gonna affect services. How are we gonna be able to like actually advocate during this current legislative session? Um, try to get ahead of this ahead of this budget and start reaching out to community partners to potentially fill the holes. Um, yeah, cuz the government is, we're just gonna have less and the more we can leverage people outside of this building to help make sure that our services are, the services are being provided, the better, the better. Um, and then
It'd be interesting, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt.
Please, yeah.
Um, that got me thinking, it'd be interesting if we could almost determine like timelines, like we're gonna know
Yeah.
how bad the whatever's gonna hit the fan. You know, by this, you know, sort of like give us more clarity to our crystal ball cuz that's kind of like a a what if.
So like grants, yeah.
How can we get ahead of that?
So the legislative set, y'all, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but the legislative session is from now until end of April, end of April?
Beginning of May.
Beginning of May. And that's when they determine how the budget is gonna get allocated. So now is the time for us to be speaking to our state reps uh advocating at the state so that, and testifying so that as the state determines budget allocations, we're not behind the eight ball. They can hear from us about what we're seeing coming down the track for us.
Yeah.
Based on the decisions that they're currently making now.
Okay.
And so that's what
That's how we're gonna add clarity to what's
Is what they're doing currently now, yeah. So engaging with CCI, engaging with our, our local councils of allocation, like that's all gonna be crucial. Yeah, I think that's my, that's my biggest thing that I wanna make sure we hit the ground rolling running on.
Not super clear on all the grants too and how that wasn't really part of the budget, how the grants fit into everybody's budget and I imagine those are gonna start to get leaner too nationally and statewide, so.
And maybe we can offset that by stepping up and, you know, it'd be nice to learn more about how our whole process is working and if we can identify any areas in our grant processes that we can enhance.
And we should have a contingency strategy for some of these federal grants that just could get cut off.
Or that are ending, like ARPA, all the COVID money. The city is feeling it, every nonprofit, we are feeling that pot is now done. And so the school is seeing it, you know, like all of these positions and services we were able to provide are dry now before even a new administration.
Mm-hmm.
So we already know, even without a new administration having, doing, doing anything, you know, we're gonna be short and running out of money for services. Yeah.
I'd like to identify those and I, I think it's more about, I'm sorry, cuz I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't know. What positions or who it is or what they say, so I need more information.
Well, that, I think I focused in on D H S and Public Health, but if staff know of other departments that would be significantly impacted, it would be great to know in that discussion too, yeah.
We can add to this as we move to, I think, you know, but we, I'm worried that we're gonna start stacking too many things up, which might take away from the focus we can get to each subject, you know, there, there's some pretty heavy, you know, what you brought up, the intermediate, intermediate schools are pretty complicated subjects, so I'm hesitant to add, add much more on there at this point.
Oh, I think we need to prioritize even when it's up there, yeah. Like, we're not gonna be able to do all that.
Yeah. So if we're thinking about February, right, we'll have two of the reg, the regular scheduled work sessions. And of course, we can call more discretion of the board, so what, in February, what do we wanna go over?
So I feel like I can ask enough questions to get myself satisfied with both of my first two, with TED and pros. But um the D H S and Public Health budget, to me, it feels incredibly urgent. Would you all be willing to keep that as a work session?
Yeah, yeah, let's each take one of our items to put, you know, the the blue star on. Um, I think the animal shelter is the one that that's already there. We know it's, puts that up in March.
Yes, it does.
Um, so yeah, let's go ahead and get that, you know, done. Whatever we gotta do, whoever we gotta talk to, um, whatever we can do.
Can I just say, I do think that the L C I S building, that has not, that is still on people's radars, like that's still on people's plates. That's not been written off, but maybe we could allow that to come a little later and know that we're not gonna be dropping the ball. The ball is being carried by other people at the moment. And we can engage in the conversation once we've gotten some of these more urgent things dug into. Would that be okay?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, leave it up there, but I'm okay putting it, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
It's not, it's not a blue star item for me.
Yeah. I'm just saying, I just, I, I wanna say without saying that I know people are trying to look at that to gather information for us.
Okay.
So, um, yes, it should be up there and by not prioritizing, it doesn't mean that other people aren't prioritizing it for us, yeah.
I know.
Is the school board still thinking about abandoning that building or?
Oh, nothing to do with the school board. I'm just saying that like the
Does anybody know if that, that was the plan to move all the kids to the grade school and start shutting that building down? Cuz that could be a place for county offices, court.
The district is still in those planning phases, but I think there's a plan to move away from uh the Pitts Building, the old elementary school.
Oh.
Also built in the nineteen fifties.
Yeah.
To L C I S, but those are just initial plans that the superintendent and her team were working on.
With the idea that Pitts would be easier for them to sell than L C I S.
Yeah, yeah. What's your, uh, let's see. Are we just looking for one more?
Yeah.
One more we can all agree on?
Yeah.
Um. Michael, how much time do you need to prepare for paving season? It's super short. Is that something we can push back a little bit or should we start working on that for you? Or is it even, is it even possible?
By the middle of June.
I'm sorry?
We need to be paving by the middle of June.
Yeah.
We need to be, we're going through that too. We need to be working on that bridge by at least middle of August.
Yeah.
Not the end of the middle of the winter again.
I don't know, I'd say that'd be something I'd really like to discuss further.
Want Michael's?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree on that.
I think with some of the other items, we can, excuse me, weave into conversations that we will have coming up.
Yeah.
And then we'll revisit this, you know, as, as we move on.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the blues, the blue asterisks, blue stars, sorry, I just like saying that. Blue star stuff is, is immediate, let's, you know, jump. The stuff next to it is like short, still short term, but you know, it's, we can't do it all in a, in a week, so, cool. Okay, moving on.
Can I, can I say just real quick?
More discussion?
Sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm just gonna say it, feel free to, feel free to not agree, but um the motocross track feels fairly urgent to me. Like when I think about, I understand that like roads are really important to people, it's what they see, that's right? And I worry that if we don't make sure that the motocross track moves forward, we could potentially actually lose more time with that asset as we get closer to the summer.
We're a few months out from them being able to operate.
So we still have time.
I think, you know, behind the scenes a little bit, there's, you know, some more uh discussion with the operators and um what council is suggesting, you know, the, the, the priorities of that lease agreement, that if there's anything we can drop, if there's anything that is a direct risk to the county liability wise. And trust me, like my emotionally, I am one thousand percent there with you. I wanna get that, you know, open, enhanced, helped in any way, shape or form. Um, from a, the business of county standpoint, I think we have a little bit of time to work with those guys before that track's even gonna be able to open.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So no, but I appreciate you, you recognizing that.
Chris and I can get to the twenty twelve lease and then the draft lease that we have worked on.
I, I have it. Um, I just might need someone to decipher some of the foreign language for me that, you know, I, I'm less fluent in. Um, the, the legalese.
As I say, I'm, I'm happy to decipher that.
Okay.
Thanks, Andy.
Yeah, thank you. Um, alright, uh, we all good with that agenda item? Ready to move on?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, uh, item number eleven on the agenda is calendar and agenda review led by the wonderful Sandra Pettis. I'm sorry, I've used both interchangeably. Is it Sandra or Sandra?
It's Sandra.
Okay, I've only known you for like, oh, you know, a decade and a half now and
I was gonna say, it's been a while.
It's ever been corrected, so I don't think
It's okay. I guess Sandra a lot.
Okay.
Sorry, just to call me safety.
Gotcha. Truly noted.
Oh, if you guys would like to pull up your Outlook calendars.
Oh wait, not Teams calendar, Outlook calendar. Are they both linked, Outlook calendar and Teams calendar, or they have differences?
They don't have differences, they are linked, um. So either one, it links to, sorry, it links to your.
Okay. I like the view of the Teams calendar, it's bigger.
Okay.
Okay, looking ahead to next Monday, the twenty seventh. You have the first work session in the morning starting at nine AM. Uh, there is also the Saint Vincent General Hospital District Regular Board Meeting, um, is at noon. Um, it's not technically Chris's thing, but it's on there for public awareness. Um, the afternoon work session starts at one PM. And the Lake County School District Board of Education work session uh is at five thirty. And um, there's also Planning Commission meeting, um, starting at four PM.
Is it a regular meeting?
It's a, it's a regular meeting.
So commissioners would want them to be here for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so probably need to end that one o'clock work session a little early.
Actually, yeah, we'll just zoom through that as fast as we can and.
I'll.
And just, and so you guys are aware, so we'll we'll go through the calendar and then we go through the agendas.
Okay, okay. Um, that's gonna be a big afternoon of my day.
Long day, lots of stuff to do.
Yeah, hey, we signed up for it.
Does that all look good to you guys?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so moving on to Tuesday, the twenty eighth. Um, you will have your morning work session starting at nine AM and your afternoon work session starting at one PM.
And we have present, what are we, what are these two presentations I'm seeing on here after the work session?
Um, so that that continues with the work session, so.
That's part of.
Yeah, they're kinda, they're separated a little bit just to kind of break them down. Um, with invites for different departments, right?
Yeah, cuz we don't need department heads sitting in here for the entire work session. It's comfortable as those chairs are.
Oh, yes. Okay, we will go to Wednesday, the twenty ninth. Um, you have a regular community coffee at eight thirty AM at CNC. Uh, morning work session will start at nine and the afternoon work session will start at one.
Community coffee's not on my schedule.
Is it not?
It doesn't seem like it's, I mean, getting in there for a half hour, everyone just barely gets introduced.
We can, um, we will get a BOCC room calendar invite out to you guys, so that could kind of be the master calendar. So it's always on there, um, but if you would like for next week to have the work session start at.
Nine thirty?
Nine thirty.
Is there a room?
Maybe nine, maybe nine forty-five, so that one is uh budget timeline and process.
Okay.
We will, we will be spending all day with Candace, so.
Nice, okay.
Yeah, um.
On Wednesday morning?
Uh, yes.
Sunshine Law and Commissioner Ethic?
No, that was this week.
That's this week.
January twenty second.
Sorry.
But uh, we can, we can move back the start of the work session to.
Nine forty-five?
Yeah, we'll do nine forty-five then.
Okay. Okay, and um, now after today, then we'll be able to go through, do all of our regular like reoccurring invites with all of you on it and it's just, it's been a little mixed up since, you know, haven't gotten fully established yet, so. After today, we'll be able to go through and do all of those, so you should have all those regular things on your.
When I get those emails, um, I've been trying to be good about hitting the accept thing, is that like a necessary step or?
It's not necessary, so on your calendar, there's a little line that has slash marks through it, so that means you're invited, you haven't necessarily accepted it yet. If you accept it, it'll turn it solid. Um, that also lets the person, the organizer, know that you've accepted that invite. Um, it usually on the invite, it'll give you some more information too, like it'll say whether it's um like hybrid, you can zoom, you can be there in person, maybe it's strictly an in-person meeting, um, stuff like that, so you don't have to accept all of them. Um, if you, you know, your regular, regular meetings, work sessions, things like that, sure, um.
And we're gonna send the invite so they just pop up?
Yeah.
On your calendar, so we will need to.
It'll just be on there.
Be on the application to accept, um, to reduce that, however, you know, we can always rearrange if a conflict comes out.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you so much, okay.
Yeah, you know, it's awesome, we appreciate it.
And on Thursday, the thirtieth, uh, same thing, work session at nine AM and the afternoon work session at one PM. Monday, uh, Twin Lakes Community Coffee happens every Friday morning, um, starting at nine AM. Um, that is at the Roadhouse Lodge. Um, Adam, I know, uh, Liz worked with us to get this on the calendar, um, they encourage commissioner participation if you guys have any time. So it'd be a good thing to pop into, what's my, we got some time?
I went down, uh, last week or week before.
Did you?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's packed, it's tight, it's a tight space, so there might not be a place to sit.
Right. Gotcha. Um, and again, work session nine AM and the afternoon work session, this one will start at two PM.
We, CPD has a a request on this day, um, you know, we've been working with DOLA to get the land use export to a um, uh, public process, a public hearing process. Casey is available that day from one to three, also we did send over our meeting for one to three, I know it would, I think we were so, um, I know it's um, Tamara at two to three, but we just had to ask if there was any consideration since we were planning to be at Casey McPherson from DOLA to help us with that training for the board. Um, really important cuz you'll have your first public hearing for it too.
Yeah, I would suggest if there's any way to ask Tamara perhaps she could come at three instead of the two o'clock, so at least though.
Yeah, I can reach out to Tamara, like about rescheduling her. So then we would have EU speaking about one community from ten thirty, like eleven thirty, then take a break and then one to three.
Oh, sounds great.
Does that make sense to her?
Yes.
I can live in there.
Okay, yeah, please.
Are we making decisions with Tamara or is it just a presentation? When does her permit process start with us? In the spring?
It's time.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Um, so um, CP does, CPD does all of the special event permitting, so they apply through our department. We send it out to all the review agencies, uh, we take in and coordinate with them. Um, so but and then we bring the permit with all of those comments and I know what we recommend for approval of the permit and then we make another decision. So um, right now, we're encouraging them to get the permits in, um, so that we can start that agency review. So we're sending it out to OEM, law enforcement, emergency rescue. So we're sending it out and creating that situational awareness and having everything um put together and then once we have what we think is uh suggestion for the permitting, we bring it to you for final approval.
Okay.
So um, that will be happening relatively, um. We always try to get them to give them a slip in January, but we haven't seen that yet. Keep working with Tamara, they get those in soon because it takes them a lot of time. And what they usually do is is bring all of the lifetime um events in at once and so then we're working for each one of them.
Do they get permitted as a whole or is each individual event its own permit?
Each individual, so there's, you know, cuz there's action plans associated separately with each one of them and each one of them. Um, obviously, the race and the hundred mile bike and boat race are big.
Yeah.
Um, but all of it, you know, you've got the camp of champions, so you've got a whole, I was just one of those, they were trying to crack seven.
We can take it.
Take each one individually and Marla, our staff, present them to you, go through any modifications or changes, all the recommendations from the supporting agencies. And we prepare the permit with conditions associated with those um requirements and then you're the final decision makers, we can add any additional conditions that you would want at that time.
Okay, and when is the next time we're gonna be able to sit down and discuss this at a work session?
So um, the county practically reached out to the city, so CPD, myself, Adam Ducharme, Ted, uh, and then the city administrator and mayor agreed, we're gonna sit down next week so that the city and county are better aligned about what we're asking the race series for. And then probably bring forward like an informational, something on your agenda, like this is what we come up with, this is where you all are feeling. So does that sound, I think we just wanted to see where everyone's at and then bring it to you for some feedback about where to go from there.
Awesome.
Yeah, um, you know, I think that, um, round table the other day was really informative for that and, you know, we're we're taking some of that stuff into account that that would be a great time to discuss this.
And that would all um be prior to um the actual process, you can review of the permits so that it can all be really um woven into.
I see.
Cool, thank you.
Okay, we'll take a look at agendas for next week. So this is Monday, January twenty seventh, this is the morning work session starting at nine AM. Uh, first agenda item will be debrief of week one, led by Tim Berkman, county manager. Uh, item number two, uh, department presentations, including history, overview, budget, and short and long-term goals. Um, first up will be public health and blood lead with Julia Johansson, Kelsey Maxey. Um, the next one will be human services with Laura Cruz. Um, then veteran services with Harry Beck and Lauren Snyder. And community justice with Gloria Perez and Angel Gutierrez. And then wrap up the morning session. Uh, the afternoon at one PM will uh be more department presentations. Um, starting with uh CPD with Ann Schneider. Tourism and economic development with Adam Ducharme. The airport with Josh Addison and the library with Renée Smith. Moving on to the twenty eighth.
Are you still sure you're good?
Am I? Okay, good. Um, uh, nine AM, presentations from community partners. Um, with the city of Leadville, led by Lord Simonson. Um, Leadville Sanitation District, led by Josh Miller. Artville Water District, led by Greg Teeter. US Forest Service, led by Pat Mercer. Colorado State University and the CSU Extension Office, led by Dan Solenberger. And Leadville Lake County Fire Rescue, led by Dan Daly. And then in the afternoon, we have more department presentations, um, with Prose, led by Duncan. And more presentations for community partners, uh, first up will be Climax Area Community Partnership Panel with Mal Wariam. Lake County School District, led by Kate Bartlett. And Colorado Mountain College, led by Ben Cairns. Moving on to the twenty ninth. Nine AM will be, we'll start off with overview of the developing Lake County Asset Management Plan and Capital Improvement Plan. Led by Liz S. Miller and Candace Bryan. Um, and then the overview of the certificate of participation payment for the jail renovation, enhanced court security and deferred maintenance project in the courthouse. Led by Tim Berkman, county manager, and Lauren Snyder, the county manager. And then PM. Uh, finance training will cover purchasing, invoicing, accounts payable, contracts, internal controls, and payroll, led by Candace. To wrap up the twenty ninth. On Thursday, the thirtieth, nine AM work session. We'll just start with discussion of the legislative process and legislative priorities for Lake County, led by Lauren Snyder and Elizabeth Rosen. Findings from the housing needs assessment conducted in twenty twenty-four, led by Jackie Wheelahan and Heidi. Who else for last one? I go? Sure. Number three, overview of Lake County housing projects. Um, housing at ten thousand two hundred project, led by Jackie Wheelahan and Michael Yerman. And the Harrison Park Master Project, led by Jackie Wheelahan and Michael Yerman. This is the morning session, I guess. Now, one PM. Uh, will be discussion of ongoing projects at Lake County Government, led by Tim Berkman and Lauren Snyder.
So this is like LCIS, the um, animal shelter, what else do I have in there, um.
Motocross.
A little bit of the of the jail, just like stuff, um. Oh, and then a feasibility study, so the RAC Center feasibility study. Where we will be asking if some directions could involve about the people through that project. Or decisions, I guess, on that project, okay.
Good. Then we'll be going to, we're writing up our first. Morning work session. First item will be department presentations, including history, overview, budget, short and long-term goals. Uh, with Office of Emergency Management, Claire Hathaway. Presentations from community partners, this will be with the Department of Local Affairs, led by Randy Snead. Um, overview of the One Community Project, led by Ann Schneider. And overview of county zoning and quasi judicial process, also with Ann Schneider.
This is the one we'll change?
Yeah.
Which will be the.
So we'll just move this down to PM and.
Yeah. Yeah. So like.
When you're saying you can.
Yeah.
If she, if she can, so, yeah, just let me do that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we talked to her and then, um.
We'll get the updated.
Do you, you have the language for what we're adding to that?
I have the language for who's gonna lead yours from one to three and then I'll check with uh Tim Brown too.
Okay.
If we need to just switch her to February or something.
Okay.
Okay.
You guys excited?
So excited.
So excited. Quick question. On the thirtieth and thirty-first, that's when CCI is holding all of its steering meetings and decision and voting. Is that, just to make sure, Lauren, do you have time to that, for that, to be our proxy still?
Either Tim or I will tag team.
Okay, awesome. Great, thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra.
Beautiful.
All right, thanks, Sandra.
And then this is also where I talked about Elsa's discovered this feature. But on our website, um, there's a place where it says, uh, there's a link to click and save meet with county commissioner, request a meeting with the commissioners. So those requests come to um Sandra and I and then sometimes they're like, I don't, um, I want them to know about this. And the response is like, okay, their next meeting is at this time. It's gonna make all the comment. Um, other times it's outside groups. Um, so we did have one reach out today from uh Christie Galarza and Gem Consulting. Uh, asking about coming to talk about uh nonprofits in town and the impact that they have on the community. So if you're okay with it, I would work with Christie to find a time at some point in February to join a work session to give that presentation to you all.
Sure.
Okay. Um. With that. Sorry. Um. Nothing else, commish? Um, then we have the consent agenda.
Consent agenda. So we are good with the calendar? Everything's, is anything approved?
Approved.
Cool.
Um, you will see in your in your packets in Teams, excuse me. Where you have those payroll, any accounts payable packets in there. Should you have ever had any questions on what something is, please reach out and we'll get you the information on that. Um, the meeting minutes that are in your packet are from the prior board. Although they do need to be approved, even though we're we're gonna make a disclaimer that we're just.
Is it that they're being approved as presented by the clerk and recorder's office?
Okay.
And I've reviewed them and there's nothing, um.
Glaring.
Blaring in them and then somebody if we can make the note to the. If folks really want to go to the YouTube or we're gonna take you.
Okay.
Yeah, question, sorry.
Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda.
I moved to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second the motion. All right, is there any further discussion of the motion?
Neither of you guys?
Uh-uh.
No? All right, uh, let's have a vote on that.
Aye.
Aye, and all right, uh, motion passes on an unanimous vote. All right, and I am going to close this regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners at two thirty-five PM, January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five.
And sorry, real quick, uh, for any folks who are on for the two PM work session, obviously our other meeting went a little long. But I am gonna close this Zoom and then reopen it, excuse me, here in a few minutes.